Recording in progress.
Good evening. I will now call the Auburn Study Session Meeting for June 9, 2025 to order. Tonight's Study Session Meeting will be held both person and virtually. Sean, will you call roll?
Deputy Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Hammer.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
On her way.
Councilmember Sturgis.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Trump Mello.
Here.
Thank you. Sean, do we have any agenda modifications for this evening?
No, Chair.
And any announcements, reports, or presentations?
No, Chair.
Thank you. So our first item tonight, under Municipal Services Discussion Item, is Project Be Free. So I will call Chief Callier.
Sorry, they have the screen taken over by Councilmember Sturgis. Oh. You got how to get to the... There we go. I'm going to sit up here in case you have any questions for me, but I'll turn it over to Katia for an update on Project Be Free and the work they've been doing.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Katia Wojcik. I am the co-founder and executive director of Project Be Free. I am also here with Jalal Thomas, who is our co-founder as well. And for those that don't know, our organization is headquartered in Renton. However, since partnership last year in March here, we've been partnered alongside Auburn Police Department, which makes four cities we're currently partnered with. All right, a bit of our program overview. We're most known for our coresponder program in which our licensed mental health counselors and domestic violence advocates go in alongside law enforcement. We also have an in-house DV advocacy team. Currently, we have three full-time advocates as well as six contracted advocates. And we also have youth support that are offered to youth that have witnessed domestic violence instances in their house, as well as are starting to become aggressive or exhibit behaviors that are harming other family members. So we're very much an organization that is focused on the spectrum of violence. So we're a bit different in the instances that we're not just focused on intimate partner violence, we're really focused on family violence. We understand that there is intersection between family violence that leads to romantic relationship violence. So we know that in order to impact that, we have to oftentimes support families. Right, this is a 2024 snapshot of services that we have here. This is specific to the city of Auburn. So last year, we supported Auburn police officers in 205 crisis calls. Our team was able to successfully secure 129 protection orders for city of Auburn residents, and we were able to make a total of 87 mental health connections in our team. This is our calls that have came in this year, in 2025. Currently, as of April, we have served a total of 105 DV calls alongside law enforcement. All right, so community impact. I think that it's important to mention that we really impact more than just our community residents. We've had great feedback from officers. Oftentimes, the feedback that we get from officers is that they feel that they can trust in our team and able to finish things that oftentimes they have to leave untied to go to the next call, or maybe in regards to shift changes. So we try to build trust with officers by providing outcomes and feedback of how things have gone, whether it is good or bad, because sometimes that can be a little tricky. And we just try to make sure that we are always a listening ear for officers if they ever have instances that they'd like to talk out with us, or they would like to communicate about some sort of situation. And then also, we like to tie the loop and letting people or letting officers know if we have secured orders, because we know in many instances, those same officers are going to be delivering those orders to other residents. Other things I should mention is, over the last year, I will say, city of Auburn residents have came to our services in regards to getting support, oftentimes a lot about families, family instances. I will say, in instances where parents, they themselves are being abusive towards other family members, even if they themselves do not want services, in many instances, we have been able to see that children are advocating for them to get resources and services, being the witness to really difficult situations. All right, so House Bill 1498, a little bit of feedback that was generated in the House in January, and it was a fund that was created at the Treasury to create coresponder programs. This law, well, it's now law, I should mention, foreshadowing, is now in law, and it's actually been created in regards to our programs. So we are big advocates for that law, and we're really excited to see that the state has made such intentional movements towards creating more coresponder programs, and seeing that individuals, whether they are survivors or families, should have access to services that are preventative, not just reactionary. And that's why it's so important that our programs like ours exist, because we want to make sure that survivors and families don't just have access when they engage in the court system. Oftentimes, we want to prevent that from happening, we want people to be safe, so then officers don't have to go out to some of those calls. So House Bill 1498 was signed into law on June 19. We were there in Olympia, and the governor has passed that this law will be funded at the Treasury by adding $100 to marriage licenses. I know in many instances, DV organizations have tried to get this to pass for almost two decades. So we're very excited that our program was taken so seriously that it was passed at the House. So this law goes officially into effect on the 27th of next month, and I will implore, cities have the opportunity to opt-in for funding to be able to have DV coresponder programs in their cities. And I will say, this grant will be funded through Commerce, and it is a matching grant. So it's just to be able to see that cities are vested in also wanting this work to be done in their communities. All right, I will mention, I have a short letter that I'm going to read from the Prosecutor's Office of an instance that we provided support in in March. "In March, a survivor of long-term domestic violence sent alarming messages to two advocates from the King County Prosecutor's Office. She indicated she intended to end her life, believing it was the only way to protect her adult children from the abuse she endured. She had experienced repeated trauma involving threats and acts of violence, and recently felt further endangering after a confidential report that she made was shared, and she was scared for her life. Recognizing the severity of the situation, the King County advocates immediately reached out to Project Be Free, who they knew worked closely with Auburn Police Department. Sharing concerns and exploring options to ensure the survivor's safety, despite difficulties in reaching her, the coordination effort led to a welfare intervention and ultimately helped connect the survivor to emergency care. This case reflects the power of cross-system collaboration. Advocates from the Prosecutor's Office, community-based responders at Project Be Free and Auburn Police Department maintained communication, shared critical information, and acted swiftly to prevent a loss of life. It is also a reminder of the emotional toll this work takes on frontline staff, who even in the midst of crisis, continue serving others while navigating the weight of potential tragedy. Ongoing investment in coresponder models, such as Project Be Free, show community partners like this between us and Auburn Police Department ensure that when lives are on the line, we are prepared to act together." I'm open for questions.
Counsel, do we have any questions?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. First off, I can't even begin to tell you, the work that you guys do is really, truly remarkable. I've heard some amazing stories coming out of your organization. We're very, very grateful for the work that you do, because it's hard, and it takes a toll on you. I guess the question I have is, are there going to be plans to expand services, especially for the underserved populations and possibly some high-need neighborhoods?
Yeah, so we oftentimes get officer feedback on what areas to canvass, so we do take that into consideration. I will say also, we're hoping that the city of Auburn will consider maybe funding us a portion through tax dollars, or maybe going for this coresponder fund. The reason for that is because, I will mention, the city of Kent's needs, the city of Auburn's needs, the city of Renton's needs look different. And we want to make sure that the responders that we are hiring for Auburn mirror what is needed in the city of Auburn. So I will say, here in the city of Auburn, oftentimes the languages that we're utilized the most in are Spanish, as well as Dari. Those are the two top languages that we often see. So we want to make sure that our advocates and our staff that are responding to those calls have those languages capabilities.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel?
Thank you for the work you have done for the last year plus. It has made a difference in this community, and I know that the comment from the one officer is one of many of appreciation. I've talked with the officers, they are very thankful for the work that you do and the professionalism and compassion in which you do it. I'm proud that we have been working with you, and I hope that we continue to work together in the future, because you are making a difference, you are saving lives, and you're also helping the officers who, as you said, often are in the middle of this, and what happens to them at the end of that shift? And so you are there as that backstop and the ability to help them, as well as the individuals involved in the domestic violence. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say, one of the things that's really exciting across all our cities that we serve is oftentimes, a lot of newer officers that are out on the street really have the opportunity to get vested and get tied in with our team, so we love that experience to really have an impact on how policing is done, and especially in instances of DV when that can be so taxing.
Any other questions, counsel?
Thank you very much for your presentation. It's very important work, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda for council discussion is Resolution 5821 with Director Crum.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. In tonight's packet, I think starting on page 26, is a proposed resolution for a 10-year continuation of an interlocal agreement between the city of Auburn and Raya 9, the watershed resource inventory area. And that is an agreement that the city has been involved with for 25 years now. So we're lucky tonight to have Matt Goring here, the Raya 9 Salmon Recovery Manager, to tell us more about the good work that Raya is doing, and provide city council with a little bit more context for the benefits of that agreement.
All right. Well, thank you, members of council, excited to be here today. As Jason said, my name is Matt Goring, I'm the Salmon Recovery Manager for Raya 9, which is the Green Du Amish and Central Puget Sound watershed. So just a quick overview, I know some of you, you know, weren't here the last time Raya 9 was, the ILA was executed, so I'll provide a little background in terms of salmon recovery context, our salmon habitat plan, then I'll give an overview of the interlocal agreement itself, a quick review of our funding sources, as well as accomplishments, and then just a little bit of looking forward. So this is just a snapshot of the salmon recovery timeline. So things really got serious in this region in around 1999 with the federal listing of Chinook salmon under the Endangered Species Act. This jumpstarted what was known as the Share Strategy Collective, and this really was a collaborative effort across multiple levels of government, federal, state, and local, as this was one of the first listings of an ESA species within a heavily urbanized environment. And so this strategy recognized the importance of local buy-in and local control in terms of being successful in implementing salmon recovery. And so what this saw, as these efforts jumpstarted, was the first interlocal agreement among the 17 local government jurisdictions within the watershed. At the same time, a similar interlocal agreement happened around Lake Washington, Lake Sabamish, and then the Snoqualmie watershed further north. Following that interlocal agreement, there was the original salmon habitat plan for the watershed that was adopted in 2005, and then after that was the regional salmon recovery plan in 2007. And then fast forward to 2021, and that was the first substantive update of the Green Du Amish Salmon Habitat Plan. And that really is what is the blueprint in terms of implementing salmon recovery in our watershed. In terms of the salmon recovery framework, you can see here, at the forefront of these watershed recovery efforts are these lead entities, which Raya 9 is one of. And so there's 15 of those across Puget Sound, and then those individual watersheds roll up to a region, we're in the Puget Sound region, and then we get policy guidance from the Governor's Salmon Recovery Office, as well as NOAA Fisheries at the federal government side. So what's kind of a unique thing about the Raya organizations and this lead entity framework is that it's a watershed-based approach, recognizing that salmon don't stay within local government boundaries, and that in order to successfully advance recovery, we need to coordinate across local governments and across jurisdictional boundaries. And this idea of, we need to do what's best for the salmon in terms of prioritizing projects based on science, best available science. And so you can see, it's a really diverse watershed, heavily urbanized in the Lower Green River Valley and the Du Amish. Then we get up to more agricultural uses in the Middle Green, and then almost the entire Upper Green is forest practices, or conserved land under Tacoma water, as that serves as their water source, domestic water source. As I mentioned, the salmon habitat plan, this really is kind of the blueprint for salmon recovery. It guides all of our investments in salmon habitat restoration across the watershed. This most recent update was 2021. This included a recent status assessment, how are Chinook doing? It was an update on best available science, we didn't consider things like climate change in the first 2005 plan, so we've also learned quite a bit of new science since the original 2005 plan, so that was a big update there. We also updated habitat goals in terms of what do we need to get done in this watershed if we're going to see a rebound in salmon numbers? We updated salmon recovery strategies, and then kind of the biggest lift really was developing a capital project list of all the projects, potential projects across the watershed, and then tiering those into tier one through three based on their potential importance, just advancing salmon recovery in the watershed. So the Raya 9 ILA, what we're here today to introduce is this proposed renewal of the ILA. The current ILA would expire at the end of this year, so we're in the process of going around and seeking renewal from all the local government partners for the next 10 years. What's in the ILA? Well, this ILA really is the fundamental underpinnings for implementation and adaptive management of the salmon habitat plan. It outlines the governance structure, how are we going to make decisions as a watershed? So this is the watershed ecosystem form. We've had, we've been very fortunate to be supported by Auburn over the last 25 years. Auburn has a long history of leadership at the Raya. You can see in this picture, now past former, I think Deputy Mayor, as well as Councilmember Bill Pelosi, served at Raya 9 for, I think, well over a decade. We also had now Representative Chris Sterns, and now we're fortunate to have Councilmember Hammer serve on the watershed ecosystem forum. Also embedded in this ILA is a funding mechanism, there's a cost share, I'll get into a little more details around that, but that provides the core funding for operational costs of running the regional salmon recovery plan. And then it outlines the requirement that we approve an annual work plan, as well as a budget. And so you can see here, the first one was a five-year ILA in 2001, then it's been renewed two subsequent times before seeking renewal for 2026. And so in terms of a timeline for developing the ILA, we started with early coordination across the Raya 9 and Raya 8 to try to improve some of the jurisdictions who participate, participate in both eight and nine, so there's this idea of, hey, let's see if we can approve alignment between those. Over time, those have kind of diverged. So we looked at, hey, how can we improve synergies across these? Then we brought the idea to the Management Committee, the Watershed Ecosystem Forum in spring 2024. We had a comment period for all of our ILA partners. We even held an optional attorney call, where attorneys could get together and ask questions about potential changes. And just want to highlight that, overall, there was a recognition that, hey, this has been a successful partnership, this has been working, let's not do anything major or substantive with respect to changing the ILA. So the Watershed Ecosystem Forum approved that in fall of 2024, and then right now, we're going around to the respective councils and seeking kind of approval or execution of that ILA. So right now, this is the sixth stop on that regional tour, if you will. We have all but two jurisdictions scheduled, so we're well on track to finishing that by September 2025. So what's in our annual work plan? So at the core of this is watershed coordination, we have the Watershed Ecosystem Forum, that meets quarterly. We have project coordination and implementation, so we have a funding strategy, and we run an annual grant round for implementing and supporting funding for our project partners across the watershed. We have a monitoring and adaptive management program. This supports an implementation technical committee, which meets monthly in terms of diving into the new science, providing technical feedback on projects as they get underway. And then we have stewardship services, and these are really support project and partner coordination and project development. So where does our funding come from? As I mentioned, the ILA provides that kind of baseline funding to support operational costs. That's about $600,000 right now. You can see in 2025, Auburn's share of that is about $35,000. That cost share is based on the respective average of your percent population assessed value in land area, respective to the larger watershed. So I can tell you, Seattle is normally our highest contributor, as you would expect from population and assessed value and size, and they're about $150,000. In terms of grant funding, most of that available grant funding comes from the King County Flood Control District. We get, this year, we got $4.2 million in cooperative watershed management funds from them. We try to, we strive to put that on the ground in terms of keeping more than 65% of that for large capital projects, about 15% for revegetation projects, 10% for research and monitoring, 5% for education and outreach, and up to 5% for implementation coordination, and that's staff support for running the grant round. Then every other year, we get $1.1 million from the State Puget Sound Acquisition and Restoration Program, and then annually, we get about $300,000 from the State Salmon Recovery Funding Board. In terms of accomplishments, we've been able to leverage, since its inception, over $200 million of investments in the watershed, been able to set back about three, probably getting closer to four miles of levee setback now. We've contributed to more than 500 acres of revegetation, conserved about 4.5 miles of marine shorelines, and removed about one mile of shoreline armory. And as I mentioned, Auburn's been, you know, front and center in this. Here's a photo of Fenster Park, that was one of the early projects completed in 2008. The second phase was in 2014. More recently, we've been funding work along Mill Creek in Auburn. You can see here, dominated by reed canary grass in many areas, and here's more recent restored section of Mill Creek. And then also wanted to highlight that our education and outreach has been reaching into schools within the city of Auburn with kind of salmon hero programs, salmon in schools programs, so those have been extremely popular amongst our jurisdictions. And then looking forward, you've probably seen in the news, we, you know, this is something that's been on the table since, you know, early 2000s. Howard Hansen Dam, critical for flood protection in the Lower Green Valley, but it also blocks migration of salmon up and downstream of there, blocking access to over 100 miles of fish habitat up there, which is generally of, you know, higher quality, more forested, natural setting. The Army Corps and Tacoma Water were on the hook for providing downstream fish passage by 2031. That already has received $270 million of funding in hand for the Army Corps to complete that. They were on track, they're working towards it. Unfortunately, this, the remaining budget was pulled out of the Army Corps construction budget this year, so right now, we have incredible support from the federal delegation. Senator Murray supports this, is working, and we'll see where this ends up in the next, you know, in the next federal budget session, but this is obviously a priority. It's a priority from not only the fish perspective, it's a priority from water security in terms of... it's a priority from water security in terms of moving forward and being able to store additional water for domestic purposes behind the dam. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions?
Kate Baldwin.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt, for coming and sharing with us. I have a question because we have a lot of community members who have moved to the region from other countries, other states, other places. And when we see the numbers like we see on here, you know, millions for this or, you know, for getting salmon to come back into our watershed, can you talk about what the greater benefits of that goal and initiative would be for folks who aren't as familiar with the history and importance of salmon, both from a maybe ecology perspective and even economic perspective?
Yeah, so I think from a cultural perspective, it's part of the heritage, you know, Native American tribes. There's treaty rights there. But in terms of a broader perspective, watershed health, what we've seen and I've learned a lot more about is terms of the multi-benefits, right? The heat island effects. When we're revegetating sections of the stream or section of the watershed, it has temperature benefits. It has, you know, open space benefits. So yes, there's challenges associated with some of those open space issues and things that we're working, working across these administrative boundaries. But I think from a larger perspective, there's also flood control benefits, right? And so I think understanding and kind of working across aisles isn't the right thing. But, you know, working to try to build those multiple benefits. So, hey, we want to advance salmon recovery, but we also want, you know, to ensure flood protection. So we can have economic development and support economic growth. Also making it a more desirable watershed to live in in terms of open space and recreational limits. So I think all those things kind of play into each other in terms of salmon recovery and investments there. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think it does. I just was looking for kind of a broad overview for folks who might not be familiar with it. And I think you accomplished that. So thank you.
Any other questions, council? Thank you for your very informative presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the fee schedule appointment with Director Gao.
Yes, we actually have a joint presentation tonight from our Public Works and our Parks staff. So we've got Jacob Sweeting, our Assistant Director of Public Works and City Engineer, and Daniel Gao, our Parks Planning and Development Manager. And they're going to be talking to you about some changes that are required to be made to both the traffic impact fees and the park impact fees related to residential development that we need to do this year in order to address some recent legislation.
Hello. Once again, Jacob Sweeting, City Engineer, Assistant Director of Public Works.
Sorry, Daniel Gao.
Gotcha.
Park Planning and Development Manager.
So as Ingrid said, we're here tonight to talk about a mid-year update to the fee schedule that's needed to address recent legislation that was passed. So last year, there were two laws, two bills that were passed, Senate Bill 5258 and House Bill 1337. Both were signed into law in 2023, and they are intended to support affordable middle housing. So those two pieces of legislation were related to impact fees and accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. As a reminder, ADUs are a type of housing unit that are restricted to be 1,000 square feet or less. They are typically on an existing property with an existing home. And a property with a home can have up to two ADUs. And those ADUs can be attached or detached from that principal residence. So Senate Bill 5258 requires impact fees for housing to be variable based on square footage, number of bedrooms, or trips generated to encourage a fee that is proportional to the impacts the housing has on infrastructure needs. House Bill 1337 limits impact fees charged to ADUs to be no more than 50% of what would be charged to the principal residence. The legislation also requires that these requirements are incorporated into the fee schedules and used by agencies within six months of their adoption of the comprehensive plans that address the infrastructure associated with the impact fees. So for the city of Auburn, we adopted the comprehensive plan for parks and transportation in December 24. So that means this month, we need to adopt these updates, this update to the fee schedule to comply with this legislation. So our general approach between Public Works and Parks was to first look at what is the average size home in Auburn. And although the data was not specifically available for the size of home in Auburn, there is census data that's available through the American Household Survey that gives us regional data. The regional data applies to the Seattle, Tacoma, Bellevue greater area. And that stated that the average size home was about 1,700 square feet. And that's for all housing types. Like I said, the data was limited. We would like to have more data, more specific data to Auburn, more specific data about different housing types. So as we move forward in the future, we will be looking for that data to see if we can refine some of our, some of this approach. So the first assumption in our approach was that of the average size of housing would be what the current impact fee rates would be applied to. So if you're going to be building new housing that was smaller than the average, then you would have a lower impact fee. And then for parks, Daniel will go a little bit more into the approach associated with the parks. They had larger housing, which would incorporate a higher impact fee to reflect the more residents are typically in a larger home. Whereas for the traffic impact fees, the traffic impact fees are based on trips generated, which we refer to the Institute of Traffic Engineers or ITE manual. And the ITE manual doesn't really give us another number above the one we use now for the trips generated. So we didn't take the same approach of going up above the current fee. And we'll get into more details on that here in a bit.
So park impact fees, and I know council went through the update into last year, but I'll give a just quick overview on it. So these are fees that are paid for new residential units to pay for improvements to the city's park system. Currently, so we have a flat fee per residential unit. So an apartment and a mansion pay the same price. And what our options were from the state with the updates is we could either use square footage or a number of bedrooms. Some jurisdictions have these bedrooms. We decided as staff that square footage would probably be easier to implement and track. And so we proposed that to the park board, I think, last month and ran through the impact fees with them. And they agreed in general with, you know, what we had proposed for them. And then like Jacob mentioned, the ADUs will be at 50% of the principal unit. At some point in the past, we missed, parks missed adding ADU impact fees. So it's missing from the schedule now, so that'll be in addition as well. And then it'll be based off the square, or with the square footage of the main house that's already on the block, we'd pay. And then how were the fees calculated? The base fee that we had, it was the capital projects that were in the CIP and the COM plan kind of divided by projected population growth over the next 20 years. That's kind of a quick rundown of that, a refresher, I guess. And then this is what we have proposed, is what we took the park board. So like Jacob said, 1,700 square feet was the average size house. And so we kept that at the base fee, which is what the existing fee is now. And then scaled it up and down from there. So you're like 500 square feet, you're probably not building a house 500 square feet. But when you're looking at 20 you department complex where they're all 500 square feet, they're not paying, you know, essentially double what they would be currently. So that's our kind of take on being in, you know, in relation to what the state law is trying to, trying to implement. And like I said, so there's the, an ADU would be on there. And then the max, you know, if you had a 3,000 square foot house, your impact would be about 6,700. Then if you did an ADU, then it'd be just under 3,400. And then there's a map on there, I'm sorry, a graph on there just kind of shows the number of occupants in a house generally goes up as your square footage gets bigger. And then, so like Jacob mentioned, we don't have great data. We had to use the census information that was out there. Our tracking system, permit tracking system, has the ability to track square footage. It's just something that they haven't done for residential, for commercial. So starting June 1st, they started adding, when permits come in, they started adding that square footage in. So we were proposing to, you know, track that data over the rest of this year and 2026 and then see if we're in line, if we need to make adjustments to impact the rates for different sizes.
Okay, so back to traffic impact fees. So our current fee schedule actually does provide some proportionality for different housing types in that we have attached, multi, attached or detached, single-family homes. We have multifamily homes. And those attached to the multifamily homes typically are shown by the ITE manual, the manual I referenced before, to generate fewer trips, so that they generate a lower fee. Also, homes that, new homes that are built in the downtown area pay a lower impact fee because the ITE manual that I referenced before again states that homes are built close to transit or in areas with good bike and sidewalk networks generate, generally generate less vehicle trips. So those pay lower fee as well. And finally, we do have a lower fee for ADUs currently than single-family homes because again, in the ITE manual, it says that they generate less trips. So we do have some proportionality there. However, the Senate Bill 5258 requires some variation based on size, just not a housing type. So that's why we need to make a change in addition to the traffic impact fee. And again, we also need to address House Bill 1337 that limits the ADU charges to be not more than half of what the principal residence would be, which currently, based on the trips from the ITE, it is slightly above half based on their studies. So we will bring, we will be bringing that into alignment as well. So developing the traffic impact fees to have some variation based on square footage. Again, the underlying assumption was the larger the home or the larger the square footage, the more trips it's going to generate, up to the limit of what's in the ITE manual. We didn't feel comfortable going above that simply because we don't have the data to support how many trips would be generated by a larger home or how many more people would be living there that would be driving. There is some variation in the ITE manual for the different housing types. Single-family homes typically generate 25% to 31% more trips than what is assumed to be an equal-sized multifamily home. Some of that could be due to size or variances in the size. We don't really have the details of the study, but we also assume that some of that is because multifamily homes generally are in areas that are closer to transit or are in areas that might have closer proximity to retail or commercial or other areas. So there might be less trips being made in vehicles and more being made by transit, walking or biking. However, again, the data is limited, so some of that is assumption-based. Overall, though, the ITE manual and other data does support that the more residents are that are within a home generally, the more trips there are or vehicle trips are generated by the home. So after all of our calculations, this is what the proposed fee schedule would look like as compared to the current rates. So on the far left of this chart are the different housing types that are in the fee schedule for the traffic impact fees. So we have single-family detached, single-family attached. The single-family attached would be something like a duplex, a triplex, or maybe an attached townhome. The multifamily low-rise, those would be, so any, once you get above four units, four units or above, you're considered multifamily. So low-rise would be the four stories or less building. Or the mid-rise would be the taller buildings that you might see here in the downtown. So those are different housing types on the left. So looking at the proposed rates, we, instead of going per dwelling unit, as we do in the current fee schedule, we changed to a per square foot model. The per square foot model results in $3.83 per square foot for a single-family detached home outside of the down area. That would be up to the current rate. So if you get up to the average size home of 1,700 square feet, you would max out at that $6,500, which is the current fee for the single-family detached home. And then those fees vary based on the different factors that I was talking about before from the ITE manual, all the way down to the accessory dwelling unit, which previously, like I said, has a set rate that is from the ITE manual using trip generation. And now we have it set as being 50% of what would be paid by that principal unit. So this provides that variability, not only by housing type, but also by square footage, but also, we believe, is fair and proportional. It doesn't result in any increase with this fee schedule. There wouldn't be one instance of a new housing unit that would pay more fee with this fee schedule than they would with a fee schedule that's in effect currently. So next steps, next week, there'll be a resolution to adopt the updated fee schedule that has these changes that we talked about in it tonight.
And then, so our park impact fee code, the section in the Sid code, it's out of date. It just hasn't been updated since '07 or whenever it was initially done. So we'll bring some code cleanup to you sometime in July or August. It's nothing that's pressing, so we're not going to try to rush it through. But we'll bring that sometime this summer.
Then I'll be back again next month. Actually, I'll be back several times. We were just talking this summer. Lots of discussions, lots of things going on. But July 28th, I'll be back to talk more about the traffic impact fee program, talk more about updating the program and continue the discussions that we had previously. Any questions?
Councilmember Kate. Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah. One question I have on the previous slide for the accessory dwelling unit is it notes that the fee is 50% of the fee that would be paid by the principal dwelling unit. I think I may have just read that funny. Because I was thinking about in the ADU presentation that we had, we were talking about the updated building codes and kind of how the lots could be broken down into different portions. I was going to say, it seemed like part of the ADU discussion was ensuring that in those parcels that were sort of micro parcels for supporting ADUs, that those could be independently owned. And so I think I just read that weird, that if you broke up your parcel to put an ADU out there, it would be the new owners of the parcel would be paying that fee, correct? Not the existing?
Whoever pulls the permit would be.
Whoever pulls it? Okay, so if the permit's pulled after sale, then it would be the new owners?
I guess, I don't know the details on that code update.
Okay.
Jason might know.
Yeah, so it is, the fees are assessed and due prior to permit issuance. So it's whomever applies for the permit essentially is who pays those fees. And they're assessed at that time. The fees are vested at the time of application. So whenever fee scheduler code is in place at that time. So, you know, it depends on the sequencing of how those unit lots might be created, but.
Any other questions, council? Thank you, guys, for your presentation. Okay, next up on our agenda is resolution number 5836 with Director Hay.
Well, Council, Kent Hay, Human Services Director, and Jody Davison, our CDU coordinator. And we're going to talk to you today about the section 108 loan application.
Thank you. So last month when we came to see you, we mentioned that we would be bringing a proposal to you to consider for.
bringing a proposal to you to consider for taking out a Section 108 loan to perform a build-out at the Auburn Resource Center. And today, we want to just go through that with all of you. So, as you're aware, we purchased the, we call it the ARC, it's kind of a good acronym, on Auburn Way North recently, with the intended use to provide access to service providers for, primarily for Auburn's low-income populations. I know you know that the food bank is there, and there's a lot of other services that are provided at this location. This proposed loan would fund a redevelopment of this space, and allow our human services staff and the service providers to better meet the needs of these vulnerable populations in Auburn. It would also provide, yeah, can you just hit the, I'm about to mess with the mouse, sorry. It would also provide meeting space and community court space. So, the HUD 108 loan application allows us to borrow up to five times of our annual allocation that we get from HUD. And as a point of reference, this year, our annual allocation is $584,178. It is $35,000 less from 2024, which is not bad, so don't, it's not a negative, it's actually a good thing. The funding, this particular project will meet all of the national objectives that are required by HUD. The funding can either be spent directly by the city, or it can also be used as a loan pool, or loan to subrecipients. The plan is to use the funds directly for this particular project. Just to very, very briefly go over how this meets HUD standards. First, it's located in the area of Auburn that has the highest rate of families below the median income. Second, the space currently does and will continue to provide services to a broad range of low-income Auburn residents. The court space will double as a public meeting space. And fourth, now that we own the building, the project falls under reconstruction of a public-owned facility. This, the next slide is the existing Resource Center. As you can see, it's a large room with just folding tables. The table closest to the image that would be on your left is the table where the individuals come and check in. We have volunteers and Auburn staff that take the name and find out what the need is that particular day. The individuals are then guided over to the service provider, who sets up each of these tables in the space. The same picture is just from the back of the room. As you can see, there's a very small restroom in the back, the building. And then, the next space is next door. This is the existing community court space. As you can see, there is no security in this space, to start with. What you can't see in the picture is, there is a restroom in the back. It's a judge's restroom and a small judge's chamber. Again, there are folding tables set up. The individuals come in. There is a security guard in the photo on the right, that's right by the green sign, provides some form of security for court when it's in session. And then, I wanted to just briefly go over with you, I know the drawing is small, I apologize, I'm going to use the mouse, maybe this will help a little bit. This is the main entrance, down here at the front, for the community space. This is a locked door here. This is a waiting area with access to bathrooms. This space over here on the right has an air wall, and this would be also a community space for community meetings. And then, the individuals would be, by appointment, taken into the back, these individual offices. We are, the plan is to start with offering these spaces at no cost to service providers, trying to encourage more of them to come down to the south end, rather than being so far north. It is a little bit of a service desert down here. A lot of these nonprofits are up north. They're harder to get access to for these individuals. The drawing also allows, in the upper top corner, this is also a conference room for use. And then, the space next door, this is the community court space. Again, this would be a secure area with a locked door. Oh, yeah, a police substation in the front. And then, the individuals can come into the community court space. This space also provides private judges' chambers in the back, with a restroom and a kitchen area. This space in the gray has to double as a community space, or the project, this particular section of the project would be considered ineligible from HUD standards. And so, these would not be fixed chairs. These are not fixed chairs, and this is not a fixed rostrum. Okay, just so you're aware. If we, for some reason, that was not part of a community, open to a community meeting space, that would be ineligible, according to HUD standards. So, the plan is to have both of these spaces double as community spaces as needed. Okay? The loan request is up to $3 million, which is our current borrowing power from 2024. The redevelopment and rehabilitation of the Auburn Resource Center is the full purpose of the loan, is to directly focus on these two spaces that I shared with you. The funds for this loan are drawn on a reimbursement basis. So, the final loan balance most likely would be less than the initial $3 million request. It is HUD's guidance that we go ahead and submit an application for up to $3 million, knowing the project would fall less. This gives us flexibility with changing prices, tariffs, and all kinds of things that impact construction costs. It would allow us the freedom to be able to complete our project. Currently, the estimate that's attached to your draft application packet is still with the architect. We are assuming, without a full report from that individual, that the project most likely would be about $2.4 million. And so, if that comes in at our full construction cost, then that also affects, in a very positive way, our loan repayment, less debt, okay, for the whole project. And then, my last slide is a loan overview for you. So, all of the final details are determined in underwriting with HUD. That would include the payment amount, the interest rate, introductory interest rate, the length of the loan, and all of those service fees, or anything that may be entailed to taking out a loan. We have up to 20 years to pay it back, although Plan A is to accomplish that in about six and a half years. The loan starts with a variable rate. It does allow the city to switch to a fixed rate, should that variable rate become unfavorable to the city. The city can convert to a fixed rate at a later date. And then, the loan repayment, Plan A, is to be funded directly from the city's full entitlement, which, again, I stated a few minutes ago, is $584,178. We don't have any plans to utilize that annual allocation for any other project in the city during this loan period. And then, I, hopefully, I have captured some FAQs, just to answer some of the questions. Relocation of community court, I think we all know that that's kind of tentative and up in the air. The Resource Center will move to Veterans Park every Thursday. It's directly on a bus line, so we're hoping that that doesn't impede access to that Resource Center at all. As far as tenant impacts, there is no parking lot construction planned. The safe parking will need to just readjust a little bit in the parking lot. We will maintain the safe parking program during construction. We don't have any anticipated impacts regarding water or power. If there were, they would be minimal. The tenants would be notified ahead of time, what the timeframe would be for those intermittent interruptions of those utilities. And then, as far as collateral, the city's first collateral is, and you might not think of it as collateral, but it is our annual allocation. HUD considers it collateral. We promise to use those funds and commit them back to the payment of the loan. Should the future allocation be reduced, the city would commit some human services grants to make up the difference, to make the annual payment. Okay? I did do a little bit of research on, late, I'm, I apologize, it's not on my slide, but I did do some historical funding of what our annual allocation has been. And it is trending up. I can tell you, in 2009, it was $400,000. 2021, it was $630,000, but the average trend is still trending up. And I did overlay the different administrations, and it looks like we actually got less money during the Obama administration, and more during the Trump administration, and then it went down during the Biden administration. Does that predict what's going to happen the next few years? No. But it is a piece of information that I thought you may want to know. And I think that Kent and I are open to questions. I'm sorry it was so fast and furious, but wanted to try to get you what I could.
Any questions, council? Councilmember Tracy too.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. On page 81 of 297 in our packets, there's a timeline for construction on this one, obviously, starting in roughly December-ish or so, and then having it reopen by December of 2026. Realistically, is that an obtainable goal?
In chatting with Ingrid, nine months is realistic. I padded a few months, just in case. So, realistically, I've been told nine months is, is very doable.
Thank you. Any other questions, council?
What's the initial variable rate?
We don't know that till we get to underwriting. It is the current rate, and unfortunately, I mean, I've asked HUD what that was about a month ago. It was about 6.25%. What that will be when we get to underwriting, I'm afraid I don't have that information for you right now. We won't know that till we get to underwriting.
With the, with that variability, what's included in the terms as far as how quickly that could change, either up or down? And is there a max on a limit or cap on what that variable rate could be?
I don't believe that, as far as changing, that's based on market. That's, would be out of our, all of our scope. I don't believe there's a cap either. It's just a variable rate. There is no fix. The, I do know that the loan is submitted with an introductory lower variable rate. At the time, you can choose after nine months to maintain that variable rate, if you choose, or you can convert to a fixed, of your, you can convert to a fixed rate. Once you convert to the fixed rate, then the loan terms and payment amount are set at that moment in time. There is a prepayment penalty that is equal to the amount of interest from the day you pay to the end of your payment term. So, if we chose 10 years, and we decided to pay off in two, we would have eight years of interest to pay. So, monitoring the interest rates for us will be very important, that we do that. And having a determination in our own mind, what's an acceptable rate, is very important as well. We could, could convert back to a variable, should the rates fall, but it would entail a full loan restructuring. It is doable, though. It is possible, should the rates fall.
Any other questions, council? Councilmember Baldwin.
And to clarify, is it HUD loan, or who's the?
The initial, the initial introductory rate is, it's carried by HUD. After the introductory period, then it goes out on the public market. You are then subject to whatever current market rate is available at that time.
Any other questions, council?
I've got a quick question.
Councilmember Trump, Manuel.
This goes to Mr. Hay. Is there any way that council can do a tour before everything starts taking effect, just so that we could see it as this now, or even if we could individually, or two of us could go together?
Yeah, and I think we can set something up with Melissa, to make sure that we don't create a quorum, if there are council members who want to tour the ARC.
Because just looking at the plans, I'm really excited to see the individual cobbies, and also having bathrooms available for the judge to have their own back there, and just the openness, where we can use them for community meetings and stuff. I'm, I'm really excited.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sturgis, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Is the main objective for the renovations to capital, or for capital improvements and efficiency gains, or will there also be a substantial, you know, increase in the number of people we're able to serve?
So, the build-out will allow us to be open during the week, because right now, the Resource Center only is available Thursdays from 1:30 to 3:30. So, that space is really not being utilized during the week, outside of our partner with We Care, and our shelter, and our food bank. So, the build-out would put more providers in that space, that will be there Monday through Friday, and allow more services that we don't have currently right now. And so, yeah, it would maximize that space and potential for more people to get help. Did I answer your question?
Yes, but will it also include, like, will we need more full-time city staff in order to run it all week long, or is that going to be mainly staffed by the other services, service organizations that are in there?
Yeah, my goal is.
Hours then to, to five or seven days a week?
Yeah, the goal for me, I think, is, because it, the way I look at it, it won't be just an open facility, like, people are just kind of going in and out, because we just don't have, it, it'll be a secure site for the most part. We want people to have appointments to go in. But we will be available. The staff will be available also during the week, because right now, we spend the majority of our time in that space, because the shelter is there, you know, we're doing all kinds of things. So, we'll be, I think we'll be manning most of the, most of the time there, checking in on the providers, but also the providers will have their spaces that they're able to, to utilize in a secure facility.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trump, Manuel. She had her hat first. Councilmember Baldwin.
Okay. Thank you. For those providers that you're looking to have in the facility, do you have a sample of whatever contract you'd be providing to them, as far as expectations, risk assumption, or, or, you know, what they're agreeing to, from a terms perspective, to come in and be in those spaces, whether free or with a charge? And do we have a timeframe at which we might begin charging those agencies?
No. We don't have a contract. I think that would be easy to get, though. I mean, I think, having the relationship that we do with Together Center, and their model, and how they write their contracts, I think we can kind of piggyback that. And then, also looking at, again, piggybacking on, because I know for the Together Center, their fee is minimal for the providers that are in that space. They want to provide a space for nonprofits, knowing that they don't have, you know, that type of funding. And so, I think that's something that we can look at, and make sure that we're providing that space at a reasonable price down the line, as we get more providers wanting to come to the space.
I think we would, if I can add to that, we would combine, we would combine our standard human services contract that we use right now with all the other providers, and marry that with a lease agreement together. I will tell you that any revenue that we generate off of leasing those spaces is considered HUD program income, and so, we would be able to utilize those funds and turn around and reinvest them back into the community. It is a HUD requirement, if we do make money off of that space. And so, we could, we could essentially fund a piece of our own CDBG program by renting out that space to service providers, and provide additional space to Auburn residents at the same time.
Councilmember Trump, Manuel.
Yes, I was going to ask you, because you mentioned something about the police area. Are we going to have a police officer there when the court system is going? And how many, how many police officers are we going to have? Because I see there's a metal detector that they're going to have to go through, so.
Yeah, so currently, we have a, we have a security guard who, who does the screening for community court. We don't need an officer to do screening for community court. The substation, just like all the substations that we do have in Auburn currently, aren't always manned by a police officer. They're able to utilize that space, and that's hopefully what we want them to do, if they are in the area, to be in that station, but they won't be there all the time. So, community court will still be manned by security and screened by security. And then, and the substation will be used when it's, when it's used.
Okay, you answered my question. Thank you.
Councilmember Baldwin.
First of all, thank you. I want to say, we visit the center when we had the opening in December, and they, and after we went to Together Center, that became my dream, to see our space. One of the comment is volunteer a lot. As a person who volunteer, I really like to have a space, good bathroom, and have a, as you, I'm envision for future, to have a space for provider. I could see United Way for tax, they look for space, and they go to, up to, can't, they use what we call it, King County Health Department. King County Health Department, they have a space here, near Fred Meyer. Maybe they'll be coming to. Maybe they'll be coming to us. So I like that. And the second, what I love about having substation, it's great to have police substation. I seen it successful in Lee Hill where the officer, it bring more traffic to the police to be nearby. So thank you. I really support it. I love it. And I could see many volunteer would be coming there and using the community rooms.
Councilmember Baldwin. I'm sorry, Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Go ahead.
Do you anticipate, I don't think I see it on here, but would there be any need to have showers in the facility?
No, we don't want that to be that space. I mean, we have a shelter that, that currently has showers. We don't want the Resource Center to become the shelter necessarily for people to come in and use showers. We just don't, one, it will cost extra money if we're running showers throughout the week on top of the shelter running showers. We don't, right now, we don't have showers in that space. We don't, we want people to go to shelters to be able to, to use those facilities.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Thank you. So the community, so there, there has to be a space for community space, right? So what's the plan for that? Or has there been talks about what that would look like?
HUD just requires, HUD requires that those, those two spaces, that the Resource Center space doesn't need a community space, but because of the layout, there's, it's a bigger space. We might as well just make it available for the public. The community court space, although smaller, has to be accessible for scheduling by the public. And so obviously, we would establish what schedule we're using the space for community court and then leave open blocks that were, where the space is not being utilized. If someone needed to have a meeting space, they could access it. That's the, that's what has to happen, that we have to allow it to be accessed when not in use.
And no, we don't have a plan for that.
Not yet.
That thought maybe be to run something like the postmark, you know, when people wanted to, to reserve that space. Still, still discussion around that, what that looks like and how to manage that.
Councilmember Trump.
Go ahead.
So, so it could be used by the community. So people that are looking for space, like for a quinceanera or celebration, something else.
They party?
Awesome.
Whatever they need.
Okay.
It has to be just opened for community use?
That's good, because they're always, I'm always getting phone calls, they, where could they use, you know, open space? So that's good to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you. Is there, if we're talking about the fact that your team tends to be there a lot of the time now, is there any point where your team would relocate from City Hall to that facility for your, you know, offices?
The team might, I won't. The mayor won't allow me to be away from her. No, but yeah, that, we use that space all the time anyway. I mean, we're, we're there the majority of the time, like I said, in the Resource Center because it's easier that, people know where the Resource Center is. The shelter is right next to the Resource Center. So I've, I've had that, that thought of, you know, us moving down to that, that space and being available again five times, because it's going to be open, you know, during the week. So it's a possibility, yeah.
Last chance. Anybody else have any questions? Councilmember Baldwin.
All right. Last question is in the area of the community court. I'm curious both what percent of the cost is going to be going into that buildout and what the plan is if the community court will no longer be operating at the close of the existing ILA in two years?
Well, with municipal court, there should be a community court, right? That's the plan, is community court won't dissolve. It'll just roll into municipal court. And at some point, we'll have municipal running a, a community court, hopefully in that space. So we're looking for a community court in the future.
I think my concern is, is from what we've heard so far, it seems like that may be an assumption that community court will persist because my understanding is it's currently funded through King County. And so with that contract ending and ceasing, if we're looking to bring municipal court services into the city, I don't know as that we've had any confirmation that community court is going to be a part of that equation from a decisioning ordinance or resolution standpoint.
May I, Dr.?
So the plan is definitely to continue with community court. It has been a successful and beneficial to not just the participants, but to the community as a whole, especially based on lower recidivism rates and, and other things. But the thing that I wanted to make sure at the end of all of the questions were answered is to acknowledge just how much work Jody has put into this. She has taken a significant amount of time, worked very closely with HUD officials at a time when grants and things have been reduced to a number of communities and counties. Hours, as she mentioned, was reduced slightly, but not very much. And they are allowing us to have our loan amount based on the 2024 grant that the City of Auburn received. And that is only done because of the work that Jody has done, the relationships that she has built in a very professional manner in which she put this all together very thoughtfully with the best interests of this community in mind.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trump, manual.
Okay. I would like to echo that, too, because you came in at one of the hardest times when we lost someone. And you came in and you just took off. And you, you, it didn't seem like you even took time to really dig into the past. You just moved right in and you took over where we left off with the other person. You're knowledgeable on every, on a lot of stuff that you've helped us go through the process without even really seeing the hard work that you were doing. Because it seemed like you just took it over and ran with it. So thank you for all your hard work.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you. And I appreciate the time you've taken to put this together, but I am still looking for answers to the last questions I had, which is what percent of the costs are going to go into the buildout for the community court space? As well as, can we get a confirmation from legal as to whether or not the resolution which terminated the King County ILA included any language that put in place a direction to reestablish?
Point of order, this is not the topic, Chair.
I'm finishing my statement.
This discussion was not, we are not discussing the court. We need to ask them a question, Chair.
This is relevant to a very large loan with a variable interest rate that we may be taking out. And I would like to hear if we have in fact authorized the city to move forward with bringing community court services.
Chair, there is point of order, you need to make decision before move forward. The topic is here to talk about the, the loan. And the loan is a clear, we, it's, it's a clear, it's from federal to federal. And question should be, what effect? But I'm waiting for your decision.
Wait a second, and we also need to know what?
Point of order doesn't need a second.
No, it doesn't need a second. Point of order.
Chair, he's done?
I. I'm going to let you finish your question, okay? And then we're going to move on.
That's fine.
Okay. Because it did come up in this discussion with this, so.
Right.
So.
So currently, the, the cost estimate from ARC Architects has been submitted to them in early, in late 2023 as an entire package. I don't have an updated cost estimate from them at this time, and so I wouldn't, I would be unable to give you a breakdown in percentage of what portion of that is committed to the community court space.
Thank you guys very much for your presentation and thank you for taking the time with all the questions. We appreciate it.
The second portion of the question was whether the previous resolution to dissolve the ILA included authorization to reestablish community court services separate from municipal court.
It's not the topic.
So the short answer is no, because the authority under the ILA is only for the community court program through the ILA itself. It cannot direct the future municipal court to do anything. So the ILA is self-contained through its end date of December 31st of 2026.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, so for our next item on the agenda is ordinance number 6977 with Director Crum.
Thank you. Sean, can we get the?
Good evening, council members, mayor. My name is Alexandria. I am Alexandria Sheik. I am the Planning Services Manager in the Community Development Department. I'm joined by Jason Crum, Director of Community Development. We have several topics to bring to tonight under the umbrella of Housing Types and Standards Code update that are either, that either directly respond to or are related to new housing laws passed between 2019 and 2023, as well as one that's just passed this year. These are required per the Growth Management Act and must be adopted generally by June 30th. Okay, so we'll start with, first topic is step housing. What is step housing? Shown on your screen is, are the state definitions. It's generally emergency shelters, transitional housing, emergency housing, and permanent supportive housing. The city's definitions, either existing or proposed, are derived from the state's definitions so that we are consistent. And note that these definitions focus on persons at different states of homelessness. This slide actually comes from San Luis Obispo, one of the planner's previous employer and hometown. I really like this slide because it shows the continuum of, of housing from being homeless to having rental housing or homeownership. It also shows the importance of step housing in that transition, in that process that someone may take from homeless to rental or homeownership.
All right, so as Alexandria mentioned, the proposed code updates are really in response to a few state bills that are referenced. So 1220, 5235, 5184 are throughout these slides. So you can always refer back to some of those bills and those requirements. But the, in the packet tonight, there's a draft ordinance that's, it starts on page 141, and then some proposed code changes starting on 146. And there's about 50 pages with the code, code text, as well as some revisions in there. Those recommendations all come by way of recommendation, recommendation from the Planning Commission. Alexandria and her team has worked with Planning Commission for a couple of months, and then a lot of our stakeholders, prior to that. So kind of high level, what some of the proposed changes are. For permanent supportive housing and transitional housing, the new state requirements are that jurisdictions are not allowed to prohibit those land use types in any zones that allow residential dwelling units or any hotels. So the proposed code changes that you'll see in the packet are updating our land use tables to allow those uses in all residential zones. And then in our commercial zones as well as industrial zones, because our current code allows hotels in commercial and industrial zones. So we recognize that, you know, housing and industrial zones are not necessarily always a compatible land use. So also proposing that for industrial zones that, that is accomplished through an administrative use permit. So we do have an opportunity to apply conditions and mitigation for that incompatibility. You also see in the code updates, some proposed changes to definitions, kind of modernizing the definition for supportive housing to be consistent with the state, as well as adding new definition for transitional housing. The permanent supportive housing and transitional housing, very similar, except for really transitional housing as defined, is intended to be more of a temporary kind of transition opportunity for approximately two years typically. Also, there's some code updates specific to emergency housing and shelters, very similar, except for that these are not required to be allowed in residential zones. So just proposing this as an allowed use in, again, those commercial and industrial zones, similar to the other two.
Okay, so all of the step housing types will be subject, are proposed to be subject to supplemental standards. The RCW states that reasonable occupancy spacing intensity use requirements may be imposed on step housing to protect public health and safety. But any such requirements and occupancy spacing intensity use requirements, they can't prevent the signing of a sufficient number of step housing necessary to accommodate each city's projected need for such housing. So on the screen here, this table is, Figure 34, is from the Housing Needs and Assessment Appendix of the Comprehensive Plan. In addition to the 12,112 total housing units that we, that's our target for 2044, our target for permanent supportive housing is 892 units and 2,300 emergency housing units. However, the supplemental standards, the purpose of the supplemental standards is to provide that reasonable occupancy spacing and intensity of use requirements, because the RCW does not prescribe how. What has been proposed is to revise the existing supportive housing to apply to all step housing types and then to remove any standards that could prevent the signing of sufficient number and then apply those reasonable, reasonable requirement, sorry, reasonable occupancy spacing intensity of use requirements. To do so, though, staff conferred with various stakeholders, including building, legal, fire, code compliance, human services, and various public work staff to ensure that the standards also comply with the RCW. Let me move into the supplemental standards specific to residential zones and commercial industrial zones. This really speaks to the identity of a site and the number of units. As proposed, the residential zones will generally accommodate less step housing units with our low to, low residential, low, low, sorry, low density residential zones accommodating the least amount of step housing units. Our high density residential zones accommodating the highest number of, of step units for residential zones. And then commercial and industrial zones also accommodating a significant portion of, of, of step housing types. And then the, these are just a snapshot of, or just a brief, like a truncated version of all of the requirements applicable to regardless of zone. The one I'd like to point out is the, the top bullet, if more than 100 units or beds than a 500-foot buffer applies. This is really to help with controlling intensity, especially on the high density residential and in commercial and industrial zones.
Okay, as part of this work, a land capacity analysis was required. So we did get feedback during our periodic comprehensive plan update that that was something that was necessary. And so as part of this work, our team did that analysis and essentially used the methodology over on the right that kind of shows the methodology recommended by the Department of Commerce that our team used. And really, it was looking at where the permanent housing and emergency housing could be located within our existing zones, looking specifically at undeveloped property or underdeveloped or redevelopable as it was defined. And then coming up based on kind of the. And then coming up based on kind of the minimum and maximum densities, what is that potential quantity that's available? So the numbers that Alexandria mentioned before, almost 900 for step housing are, or supportive housing, our capacity was over five times that amount. So 5,000 was our capacity. And then for emergency housing, we have over 1,000 additional units, you know, theoretically, potentially available. So we more than meet our capacity requirements. Also, as part of the recent legislation, the state included what appears to be an attempt to kind of create opportunities for sheltering, specifically on properties owned or controlled by religious organizations. And so the new legislation really says that jurisdictions are not allowed to prohibit those from being located on a religious organization with some parameters. So in the recommendation, we, current code allows encampments through a temporary use permit. In our time here, both Alexandria and myself, over 10 years, we've never seen an application of that type come to the city. So the proposal here is to modify our code to be more consistent with what appears to be the state's goal, which is to focus those for religious organizations. So that is, those are the proposed code changes related to this. And then rather than, since the city is not really able to prohibit an application, the proposed path for these encampments is really more of a registration process. So these organizations will, they have a requirement to reach out to us, to notify us that an encampment is planned. And then the proposed code language really has all of the, kind of the the requirements that have to be met in order to continue to have an encampment in place for a certain period of time. So having that in code does allow us the opportunity to do inspections and code enforcement, and kind of follow up and check throughout the period that those encampments are proposed to be in place for.
Okay. Now, the remainder of slides, each of these slides are a different statute that we are proposing a code to address. So this is density bonuses for religious organization developments. So essentially, the state's requiring jurisdictions to allow density bonuses on properties owned by religious organizations. They have some stipulations. It has to remain affordable. It doesn't guarantee deviations or variances. Each jurisdiction is allowed to propose a specific density bonus allowance, and staff proposed a bonus of up to 50%. Because of the number of affordable housing units, we thought 50% would make sense. But essentially, it's requiring, it's, the code is meeting, sorry, is meeting the statute, is meeting the RCW. So there's not a lot of wiggle room for this code update.
Should say also, this is Planning Commission's recommendation as well.
Correct, yes. Yes, staff proposed, Planning Commission recommended, council. This is yet another statute for density bonuses. The state is also requiring jurisdictions to allow a density bonus up to 50%. This is within an existing commercial mixed-use or apartment building. This does come with some stipulations that we also cannot require additional parking, and it has to be within an existing building. And that building has to have a certificate of occupancy for at least three years. But similar to the density bonus for religious organizations, it can't necessitate like a variance, some deviation from code to make the density bonus essentially work. And this is more of a code cleanup. So following the code update in December 2024 for middle housing, Commerce reached out to us and said, one of the provisions in particular in 182520 is written a little bit too narrow. It's consistent with the RCW, but it's written a little bit too narrow. So they were very generous to say at the next opportunity to update the code, you know, modify that standard so that it doesn't appear that it's altering a critical area, it doesn't, is prohibited to accommodate middle housing. So this is kind of more of a code cleanup. The way to, for this correction is essentially to remove this is essentially to remove this provision, because middle housing is still subject to the critical areas regulations.
And this code change really is to make it consistent with any other development. So there are opportunities in our code to do mitigation for critical area impact. So this code change is really to make sure.
Make it like all other housing types.
Yeah. All right, last couple of code items. Here is, so one is related to communal housing. The recent legislation really limits, so right now, our code is for communal housing. You can have up to four unrelated people living within one communal rental property. The state now says, we cannot, we cannot prescribe that number. We cannot limit the number at all. So the proposed code change is to remove that maximum of four. Now, there still will be the application of the building code and the fire code. So you can't have an unlimited amount of people living in a home. It still has to meet, you know, minimum occupancy requirements for safety. But if you can get more than four people in a house, based on occupancy, our code has to be updated to allow that. And then finally, Bill 5184, there'll be a lot of talk about this in the coming year. This is the very recent legislation that has modified parking requirements and is limiting the amount of parking that we can require for certain applications. So there are, since there were code updates being brought before council specific to these types of uses, we thought that it would be prudent to just propose those parking modifications at this time, just so we don't have to revisit it again specifically for these types. So for multifamily residential, currently, our code requires one parking stall per unit. And the new state maximum is one-half of a stall per unit. So 50% of the prior requirement. And then the state says that we cannot require any parking for senior housing. So you'll see those proposals in the proposed code. And then there'll be much more, like I said, conversation in the coming year plus as we work to implement those other parking limitations in the future.
Councilmember, do you want to add?
Jason, could you explain that a little bit better on the no minimum, for the senior housing?
Yeah, so if someone were to construct a senior housing facility, the city is no longer able to require a single parking stall for that proposed use. So I guess in theory, the idea is the developer knows their market, knows their customer, and should and will accommodate parking accordingly. However, you know, I think a lot of us have seen that that's not always the case. And so we do have concerns about that. So there will be a lot of conversations, especially with our colleagues in Public Works, to, you know, look at holistically all the standards and, you know, looking out for our community's best interest as best we can within the limitations being proposed.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Councilmember Teresa Taylor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Director Crum, you had mentioned earlier that some of these changes were vetted and, like, approved by the Planning Commission?
Approved for recommendation to bring forward to City Council.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. With regards to the changes to allow our community churches and religious organizations to host homeless encampments, when you have the note on there about allowing for inspection, are there, I'm assuming, things on there related to potable water, providing a certain number of bathroom facilities, cleaning of those facilities if they're temporary, maybe distance for any shelter from, you know, portage ons, things of that nature, just to make sure that as those organizations are doing their best to support the community, that there's still dignity for those that are seeking shelter. I want to make sure we're not creating any environments that could have associated health hazards, if you will.
Yeah, that's fair. And all of those regulations that you mentioned are part of that guidance and part of that proposed code. I think our department plan also is to put together kind of an info handout, kind of a worksheet with a lot of the requirements, just for any of those organizations that are thinking about that, so they can, you know, really plan, plan for that. There's also separation from property lines and maximum aggregate area of tents spaced just for fire safety and creating fire separation. So, yeah, out of concern for those that will be using those facilities.
Any other questions, Councilmember?
I know it's something that we're receiving from the state legislature with regards to that no minimum parking for senior housing. But that just feels like it was maybe written by people who don't understand that senior citizens have visitors, they have meals on wheels, they have home health aides, they have care providers and friends and family and all types of people that come, you know, see them and visit them in those spaces. Is that something that you anticipate we would take back to the legislature to lobby for change? Or do you see that as something that they'll want to just enforce for the sake of enforcement?
It's hard to predict the future. I mean, certainly, we have advocated, I don't want to say in opposition to, overall, stuff like, looks like.
So one of the things, regardless of what the minimums are, or the inability to require a minimum number of parking stalls, is the fact that the market, it's only what the market is willing to utilize. And so I think most developers realize that senior living does require parking. So even though we can't mandate it, they're not going to build a product that doesn't have parking, because they won't have people interested in being there.
Any other questions, Councilmember? Thank you, guys, very much for your presentations. Very good.
Deputy Mayor? Could I suggest maybe a 10-minute recess before we jump into rules and procedure?
Okay. We will converse back at 7:22.
Yes?
Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order. We are going to do an agenda modification. The junior council has a short presentation they wanted to do today. If you guys want to come in. Thank you for coming. You want to interview some of the new presentations?
Hi, everyone. My name is Rowan Santos. I'm one of the junior city councils.
Hi, my name is Rowan Santos, and I'm vice chair for the junior city council.
Hi, I'm Sophia Chia, and I'm one of the junior city council members.
And we all had the opportunity to go to the NLC conference, and we will be sharing what we learned today.
Good afternoon, Mayor Bacchus, members of the city council and others in attendance. My name is Pearline Carr, and I am with Rowan Santos and Sophia Chia today. We are proud to stand before you as youth delegates who recently represented Auburn at the NLC Congressional City Conference in Washington, DC. We had the incredible opportunity to join youth leaders from across the country to learn, connect, and advocate. The experience gave us a deeper understanding of how cities work, how policies are made and shaped, and how young voices can help lead meaningful change in our communities. During this conference, we attended workshops, workshops over the days. In the workshops, we shared ideas with delegates from other cities and even created mock policy proposals addressing real-world problems. We used methods such as ideating, getting a bunch of ideas on sticky notes on the table and brainstorming, and voting on what we wanted to use as our problem solver as a team. The problem-solving process we learned in these workshops gave us new skills that we will use in our future days.
During our three-day workshop, we were assigned a team of delegates from across the nation. There, we share our experiences as members, such as the big issues in our cities, our cities' populations, and the diversity of our community. We also learned about how junior council operate in different cities, such as their sizes. For example, we learned that from one of Texas junior council had 80 members compared to ours, which is really different. In addition to that, from interacting with different youth delegates, we learned the method they use to organize themselves and the different activities they have executed. It was really interesting to learn about all this as it helped us brainstorm more ideas that we can bring back to improve our community. And I also learned that there we were able to execute events, like such as subunits, with collaborating with organizations. And throughout these three days, I and fellow Auburn members got to share our experiences as members. We discussed the events that the Auburn community had experienced, and through those conversations, we were able to get further insight from fellow attendees on similar community events. And by attending NLC, we saw how some cities had large number of people, ways of operating, and some even had matching uniforms. We were amazed by how much similar in our council was from others. In addition to receiving inspiration from fellow attendees, our council was also amazed when we got the opportunity to listen from guest speakers. For example, one guest speaker discussed about the importance of youth leadership, how speaking up and making our action clear can help us form a diverse, powerful, and inclusive community. Another speaker discussed about the power of making changes and how it can make a big impact in your community. She also discussed about the issues of homelessness and how we can lead to make big changes. She taught us that in order to make successful change, it is extremely important to, for us to research so that we can know if, if the solution we are coming up is meeting the needs of the people that are experiencing it. And from the guest speaker, we learned that it is important to plan extremely well and confidently speak about the issue in order to make a big difference.
Throughout our lessons, we learned incredible teachings. We learned the fundamental lessons within the realms of ideation, developing solutions, and finally, delivering pitches. First, we identified problems within society. Throughout our first lesson, we learned how to solve and analyze broader societal problems. But we aimed to dig deeper and inspect the depths of certain adversities. Whether through homelessness, equity, or engagement, we looked at the roots of adversity to grasp a deeper understanding of a given problem. Personally, our group was assigned DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And when analyzing aspects of DEI amongst youth, we tackled a deeper issue of representative curriculums and school support structures. After analyzing the issue, we delved into the idea of ideating, where we learned to generate as many solutions as possible. And our groups and team members generated numerous solutions. Then, we narrowed down and selected solutions that were more plausible and achievable. Since we analyzed the aspect of education and diversity, we looked at the solution of amplifying diverse, diversity in education, especially through cultural and historical classes. After we generated ideas, we proceeded to present them. We moved on to our final lesson, which was pitching. Some of the groups had the opportunity to share their brilliant ideas and express their concerns about a current issue. Some groups were truly astounding and inspired us to be bold and courageous and use our voices for change. And it was amazing to see the vast implications of these three simple yet pivotal topics. We will implement our learnings by continuing to approach issues with the same depth, care, and structure we practiced throughout the course. We'll look closer, whether it's around education, equity, or representation, to understand the full story and impact behind an issue. That mindset stays with us beyond the classroom and our junior city council. From there, we'll carry on the ideation strategies we use. For example, in our group, we realized how powerful it could be to push for more diverse curriculum options in schools, something that could shift the way students see themselves and others. Lastly, we won't hesitate to share what we care about because pitching taught us that ideas mean more when they're shared. We'll take that with us in student meetings, leadership spaces, and of course, our junior city council. Anywhere we have the chance to speak up and advocate, our voice is part of our impact. And now, through the NLC conferences, we know how to use it.
Our voices are especially important as young people given today's world. The lessons we learned through NLC ignited a change within ourselves. And we will continue to relentlessly pursue justice and impact. We are grateful to be part of the change and to bring the lessons we learned back to our city of Auburn, which we are proud to have represented as such a grand-scale event. Sharing ideas and inspiring collective hope with other youth leaders across the nation was a powerful experience. We will cherish the lessons we've learned and the connections we fostered together. Thank you for your time today and for making NLC possible for us.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was so good to see you at NLC. Council, does anybody have any questions for? Councilmember Baldwin?
I just saw how much fun you ladies were having as you were moving around. And then, when I saw you on the plane and I saw how tired you were, I knew you guys had a good time. So, thank you for representing us. And the experience of what you've had and you've learned, bring it back to our, our city is just remarkable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Baldwin?
Thank you for coming and sharing with us tonight. And one of the things I think is always important is making sure that you can provide help and guidance for the folks who are going to be coming up behind you on junior city council. So, if you had any advice for the next cohort that attend NLC, what advice would you give to those next attendees?
I would advise them to talk with a lot of people, network so that they can get more ideas to bring to the community that they're involved in.
Yeah, I would also say how important it is to network and learn from other states around the whole entire United States and learn how their imposing change within their communities, as well as how their junior city council operates and functions. But I'd also say to take as many notes as possible, as it is always great to, um, take note of as many ideas and as many teachings and learnings as possible.
I also agree on the part of taking notes and also not being afraid to ask questions or question things in order to have a better experience and to also network as they send us. It helps you learn more about the experience.
Well, that sounds like great advice, maybe for even our team.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming and giving your presentations. Okay, next on our agenda is the rules and procedures, and I'm going to turn that over to Councilmember Baldwin as the chair of the ad hoc committee.
Does anyone have a normal pen I can steal? Borrow. I'll give it back. Steal? Borrow. Okay, very good. So, is everyone excited? Enthusiasm. All right. Well, we are here to go through the first draft of what the Rules and Procedures Committee was able to put together. So, that committee was made up of myself as chair. We also had W. Mayor Cheryl Ricks and Councilmember Clinton Taylor. As noted in the agenda, we met many times to get through the whole document and to make sure that we spent adequate time giving fair review and consideration to all of the recommendations and materials that had been submitted. So, we met on March 21st, 28th, April 11th, April 18th, April 22nd, May 8th, and May 14th. So, quite a bit of session. So, thank you very much to our city clerk for her attendance and participation in helping us with tracking, as well as to Attorney Wayland, who helped provide guidance. So, if you remember, when we first started the 2025 iteration of our review for rules and procedures, we had three tenants that we started with. The first one was that we wanted to make sure that we did everything legally. So, we don't want to introduce anything that could be questionable from a legal standpoint. Seems like a good, good starting point. Second, we wanted to make sure that we didn't do anything or introduce anything that would create extra overhead or extra work for staff. So, we wanted to make sure that we were mindful that any of the recommendations that we had from that perspective would not create additional overhead in our city operations. And then, lastly, we wanted to make sure that we kept the community kind of front and center. So, making sure that we would stop and ask the question for some of the changes coming in. Does it support the community? So, those were the criteria that we were really looking for. And with that, we also had a number of, we also had a number of just minor sort of scribners cleanup and little things that you'll see throughout the document. Now, the very first thing that I will kick us off with as we go through and as we get going, kind of first and foremost, this meeting is not, does, is not, and does not have to be our last meeting. My expectation is we'll go for about two hours or until people start, you know, visibly looking like they don't have anymore in them tonight. And if we need to keep going after that, then we will pause with what we've been able to get through and continue forward. If there's anything that looks like it's going to be really sticky, that is going to need additional conversation, or maybe people in the room feel like they want to take the time to digest it, go back, you know, go back, you know, maybe work out some different ideas or suggestions, we can put those in a parking lot. We can come back to those items. So we're going to start at the top with our first section and ultimately make our way through the document. And in the same fashion, looking for everyone to feel welcome to have a voice in this document, to feel like they can ask questions. And I'll do my best to guide us through. And I'll, of course, look to our clerk and our legal rep to make sure that I stay on track as I chair our way through this. So the first thing that you'll notice, well, first before we go, questions.
I don't know who calls. Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a suggestion because there is a lot of documentation there and there's always, there's already been a considerable amount of hours of time that's been put into this document. So, you know, my suggestion would be, instead of, you know, going line by line of every correction that was made in there, what's often been mentioned in previous meetings is that people have had time to review it, right? And so my suggestion would be to just kind of, you know, give a 30,000-foot view of what was done. And then if folks have any specific questions that they have, that they would like to bring to the floor, you know, I think that would be a better use of time as opposed to just line by line going through every change that was made and trying to answer every question that someone's, because we had some folks that had several suggestions that they made. In fact, there was, you know, some folks that had like five or six pages worth of things, which is fine, which is fine. I'm just saying that for the, for the use of time here, you know, my suggestion would be to not have to, you know, look at every single thing that was suggested and put on there because there were a lot of suggestions. They were all taken into consideration. And there are some spaces where it just wasn't room for that to be added. And then we tried the best we could to take into consideration and merge in those suggestions where, again, with the clerk and the legal department in tow with us as well. So for me personally, I, I just wouldn't want to sit through us going through line for line every change that was made and then having some discussion about every single change that was made. That's just me.
Councilmember Sturgis has a question.
Councilmember Sturgis?
Yes, thank you. What, just for background, since I came in during the middle of these meetings and changes happening, what is, is there, do these have to be reviewed yearly, bi-, you know, biannually? Is there a set amount or a certain timeframe that these need to be reviewed and updated? Because when I'm looking at, they were just updated in October. And it just seems like, man, that was a bunch of meetings and a lot of time we've now spent on wanting to make corrections here. So I'm just trying to understand the background of what's making this such an important priority for us.
Sure. I'm happy to take that question. So the common practice for rules and procedures is that they wind up being reviewed on an annual basis, typically done by a appointed ad hoc committee for rules and procedures. And they take the document, receive feedback from other council members, which is sent into the clerk. And then through committee meetings, evaluate the recommendations and work with staff and legal to either refine the language as appropriate and see if we can't consolidate where it makes sense because sometimes you'd have multiple people with similar recommendations, and ultimately provide a refresh of the document. Now, the reason for the importance of rules of procedure is that this is the document that we use to self-manage ourselves on city council. So this is where we set the terms, if you will, for how we operate our meetings, how we interact with staff, when and where different people take different roles, and how we handle appointment process, for example. And so it's, I think, start to finish about just under 40 pages of material. But it's important because this is what we use for our legislative body to manage ourselves. Does that answer your questions, or do you have any others?
Yes and no. I understand what the document is and the importance of the document. I've reviewed that in my onboarding training. My question was more, you know, what made this rise to the top of the list of being a priority to spend this much time over the last three months needing to change it? I guess I was looking for the background of, was there a specific concern or is it just an annual common practice? So.
Sure. I'll be forthright. I think the concern that we had and part of the reason that we took so much time in going through the process this year was that, you know, there has been instability within council and we wanted to make sure that we didn't shortchange anybody or their recommendations. And so part of coming onto council and for yourself as well is that you have a voice in how we self-govern. And so wanting to make sure that if people have feedback or recommendations about how we do so, that we gave it, you know, a good, good attention, right? And so I don't think this should be the only thing that we accomplish as a legislative body this year. And to Clinton's point, hopefully it's something maybe we can get through fairly quickly tonight. But it is, I think it's meaningful for those that have contributed recommendations that are hoping to see it reflected as we go forward in how we manage ourselves.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Any feedback on Clinton's recommended approach to move forward a little faster? Councilmember Amher, you were first, and then Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Thank you. To Clinton. I heard you, you talk about that this is, you take care of the three things. The legal, not increase overhead, and community. I did it here. Take care of the body because this is coming from the council body to us. So to, that's why, as Clinton, I'm sorry, we need to make sure our, why our request did not been add. We need to have answer. If that mean we go slow, that's okay. That's what we did last year, and that's what we will do this year. And we need to know like why any of our recommendation has not been add, only one or two. It became only one voice. So we will take it slowly. We will finish as much we can today.
Thank you. And Councilmember Trump Manuel?
In the 11 years I have been here, this has been the longest and the most change that we have done to this body. And I, I agree with Mr. Clinton, Councilmember Clinton, that we've had plenty of time, several times, to add, to take out, to add, to take out. And now we're considering to take it slower and answer why some of the things were not added. You three are the ad hoc committee and review everything very carefully, not by yourselves. You have legal and you have the city clerk. And I think that we've already done this so many times that we're ways, I see it as we're doing it all over again and we've already done it several times. So I, I would suggest the same thing, to go through it and not go line by line. Thank you.
Okay. I will. So even I've got different feedback, what I would like to do is cover a couple of things that I think are thematic throughout the recommendations that we had heard and address those. And then we will make our way through the document. The last thing I want is to have anyone feel like this is being shoved down their throats. And so if that does mean spending a little bit more time in areas that we can do so, but hopefully, the... Interesting noises in the room today. Hopefully, we'll be able to make our way through. And as I said, you know, we're probably wasting more time just on this intro when we can dig into the content. But I do want folks to feel comfortable participating in this process. So I'll launch into the themes. And as you feel like you have a question or want to make a statement, by all means, give a show a hand. And then I'll ask, Lisa, I don't have a great way to see it at the moment, so I'm looking at our clerk to give me a heads up when you've got something that you want to chime in with. So if I'm not calling on you, immediately know that there might be a little bit of lag, but we do want to hear your voice too. So initial substantive or perhaps not changes is, one of the things that was introduced last year was, we wound up having, if you remember, there was a decision to go through an insert or interim deputy mayor after just about every instance of reference to deputy mayor. That's wound up making a lot of the language very awkward and very cumbersome. And so one of the things that we did that you'll see throughout the full document is we did go ahead and strike the reference to or interim deputy mayor. And the reason that we did that is because we ultimately incorporated a new section that is, rather, a new line to provide ongoing clarity. So that way, we don't have to have that formal piece repeated again and again and again and again and again. And so that one is related to the, 12 dot 1 dot E. So I will take us down to that. And as I go through, you'll see this reference like you see on the screen. Let me make this a little bit bigger. Is that good for everybody? So I'm jumping us ahead to 12. Section 12 is our section related to the deputy mayor. And so one of the things that had been clarified last year as we have been going through, kind of unexpected changes, quite honestly, that not a lot of councils have what we've had in recent years, which is we've had two appointments. We had one council member, Chris Sterns, who moved up to the state legislature. And we had the departure of our good friend and colleague Larry Brown, who was also, whose position was filled with a second appointment. Many organizations don't see that in, you know, 30 years, much less within, I think, less than five. So what we have adapted here in order to do that cleanup just throughout the document, and this was drafted by city attorney Jason Wayland, is the addition of a statement, "Hereafter and throughout these rules, any interim deputy mayor, once selected, again, selected by this body, shall be referred to as deputy mayor." And the point of that is that just as the deputy mayor is the successor in the event of something catastrophic happening to our mayor, if something should happen to the deputy mayor, it allows for an interim deputy mayor to fill in that role. And so when that person is acting as the head of our legislative body, they need to be able to perform the duties that are necessary to support the legislative body. So as a legislative body, things that we do, we work to review and approve budget. We work to pass budget amendments. We work to, you know, approve ordinances and make sure that we have our different facilities plans and all of the things that we need to operate as a city. So the goal with this shift is really just to clarify that in much the same way that if something should happen to our deputy mayor, instead of having to sort of micromanage it throughout the document, we've added this line in order to just clean it up and make it a lot more concise and clear for people who would be reading this in the future. Councilmember Amher.
I have a question. So you, we will call the acting deputy mayor as a deputy mayor because it will be temporary assignment until the deputy mayor will come back. Do I understand it wrong? Because technically, all this we've been done it to have acting deputy mayor. So we will select the acting deputy mayor, then we call it as a deputy mayor. That's mean we have a new selection? That's what you're saying? That's mean we don't have acting?
Because what it means is in the event of a prolonged absence...
We serve as interim deputy mayor until the return of the regular deputy mayor. So its temporary position should be attached with temporary title. We cannot call two people deputy mayor at same time.
So the goal of this was to allow for the document to simplify any references that whomever is in that position, in that duty and being responsible for those activities, should be referred to and acknowledged as the deputy mayor for performing those activities. If someone is on absence or prolonged or out and the interim person has been selected by reference, that they would simply be referred to as deputy mayor until such time as either the return or the selection of a new deputy mayor. Seeing a nod that that's appropriate, I'm seeing a nod that's appropriate. Another, your question.
My question? Again, I know it's not about the nod, about the logic. The deputy mayor absent, deputy mayor Larry Brown absent. We have acting deputy mayor, let's say, John whatever. How that will be done? It's temporary job. It's not for a clean document. We need to have logic when we write something. We need to think about it. Are we giving two deputy mayor at same time? It's not for cleaning document.
It is both for cleaning document and, as you'll see, reflected in the full statement. "In the event of a prolonged absence or unavailability of the deputy mayor, the council shall vote on which council member shall serve as the interim deputy mayor. The interim deputy mayor shall be the council member who receives a majority vote. That council member shall then serve as interim deputy mayor until the return of the regular deputy mayor or until the subsequent deputy mayor is designated by the majority vote." So i.e. the next election. "The interim deputy mayor shall have all the rights, duties, and authority of the deputy mayor under these rules. Hereafter and throughout these rules, any interim deputy mayor, once selected, shall be referred to as deputy mayor." So this is, in fact, providing a mechanism for us as a body to vote on who that would be. And it simply says that when they're serving in that elected capacity, elected by our body, that they can do all the things that that deputy mayor needs to do. It doesn't try to take anything from anyone else previously voted. If that individual is able to return and resume duties, I think the expectation is that they would be return, returning to duties and full title. So question, Councilmember Trump Manuel.
In the past, we used to have the senior council that would step in as deputy mayor, interim deputy mayor. But since we have changed that to a vote, voting someone in, I'm okay with the wording in this.
Thank you. Councilmember Lisa Sturgis, do you have any feedback on this item as far as the function of interim or the update of reference to deputy mayor throughout the document?
So just for, to make sure that I'm hearing correctly, is that we're, we've added in that statement to say that they would be the interim deputy mayor. However, for the sake of this document, they perform all the duties that are listed as for the deputy mayor.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm seeing nods. I believe we've explained it. I'll accept that change. That's cool.
We still have time to go back to 12, but go back to the beginning.
All right, so.
It's fine in the way with me. Thank you.
All right. In the document, again, that was probably one of the most frequent changes that you'll see throughout the document. So we did want to get that one covered and out of the way first. Other things that we heard as far as thematic changes that were being requested by council members was really looking to provide more clarity around language that had been, sorry, that had been introduced in last year's cycle. So if you recollect, some of the items that we had introduced in last year's cycle were related to kind of the concept of onboarding. Again, this originally stemmed from the fact that we have had off-cycle, please tell me, I'm sorry. I was thinking it was just on the one document. That's my bad. We have had off-cycle appointments, which have brought people in, in kind of irregular circumstances. Even myself, when I was elected, had come in, I believe, as the only person that was new in that cycle. So sometimes it can be challenging. And so what we had worked to introduce in that was to cover how we would handle our council training, which I believe is under, our council training. So this was an area that had a lot of discussion last year. And because it was newly introduced last year, I think had a good amount of update this year. So one of the things that we heard is that we really wanted to have clarity around the fact that while the deputy mayor is in fact the head of the legislative branch, they do not have the ability to penalize or punish or tell other council members effectively what to do. Council members are all independently elected and we are peers to each other. And so based on that, there was a fair amount of language tweaking throughout the whole document to reflect that better, which is that the role of deputy mayor is meant to serve as a conduit to get legislation forward, to get things on agendas, and to help with that coordination. But ultimately, as council members, we all have to be independently responsible for making sure that we are in fact doing our training. making sure that we are, in fact, doing our training. And the meetings that are available to us as a tool and a resource through the deputy mayor are available to us at our discretion. If we choose to use them, that is our choice. If we do not use them, that is also our choice. And so looking to make sure that language reflected the fact that it is something that you can avail yourself of, but it is ultimately your decision as to whether or not to utilize those things. So within the training section, you'll see that we had a shift where, whereas previously, and again, I think in that first iteration, the language was firmer, we have introduced more flexibility, and that council members are encouraged to participate in training offered by individuals, agencies, et cetera. Stenographers fix in our municipal research, just to fix the eye that I believe had been missing. And to clarify, again, if someone's onboarding and they're in an off-cycle or off-term, we do have our clerk and attorney and mayor who work to make sure that that person is adequately onboarded. But a lot can be coming at you really fast in those first weeks. And if someone just wants to be able to look back and say, "What should I have? What should be there? What should I do next?" That's the goal of this section. It's not to drive enforcement. It's really just to be something that someone can go look to, to say, "How do we do it here? How do we do it in Auburn?" So that they would get a copy of the AWC's Mayor and Councilmember Handbook, the Master and Council Meetings and Guidebook that we received through Jurassic Parliament, which is our consultant, or rather, friend, partner, I'm not sure what capacity, that had come in and presented to us with the dinosaurs to work on our practice with motions, and a current version of Rules and Procedures, so that they have those materials for reference. Council members, again, are encouraged to complete training within the first year. And clarifying that council members will be provided any mandatory training for OPMA, our Open Public Meetings Act, and the Public Records Act, which are legally required for newly elected officials. And again, that's handled by our clerk and attorney. And the deputy mayor may participate, but is not required to participate. And likewise, with our other sections, you'll see we have our cleanup of the deputy mayor reference. And we did go ahead and just agree to strike out that the progress against training would be tracked. We recognize that the original intent of that, I think, was perhaps misunderstood and that it was never meant to be something punitive, but meant to be a way to give an individual, you know, more of a coaching and mentorship opportunity. But given that it did raise concerns about interactions between the role of deputy mayor and council members, we said, "You know what? We're good. We can, we can put that responsibility on our individual council members." And of course, attorney and clerk will keep us up on anything legally required, and we did that cleanup. Do we have any questions or concerns about those updates in that section? Can I ask, is that closer to what you were hoping for from a outcomes perspective? Good. Yeah. Sorry. We worked really hard to try and like find the right structure and balance. Councilmember Sturgis, any questions on that section? Especially as someone newly appointed might feel a little close to home.
Yeah, it does. Thank you. So the only thing that I guess I just, I'm not opposed to it, but I am a little concerned just by the word encouraged. So, I mean, I'm, you know, here to do a role that we've made an oath to, and so I can choose if I want to get trained or not. I mean, that just doesn't seem like, I don't know, maybe I'm just misinter, or I'm not understanding it properly for the intended reasons. But is there a reason that we would not require ourselves to get the proper training to do our role properly?
The historic context for the shall versus the encouraged was, I believe, from last year, a question of timing and, and when would things be required, or who would track it, and how would that get done? And so, under the guidance of technically, apart from the OPMA and PRA, the legally required trainings, the additional things are things that we should hope that all of us want to do them, and I think for those, you know, present, we do. But ultimately, as elected officials, it is not necessarily something that can be mandated by statute. We do set the expectations for ourselves with this document, and so we shifted to the encouraged language as a means to allow for flexibility in that people may have different things happening in their lives. And I think in our original, original document, we were trying to put, you know, rough timeframes around, right? So that first year, again, a lot of training is happening, so we would encourage it. But for all of the optional things, again, training may include some of these other areas, but not necessarily.
Okay. So there are required trainings that we are held accountable to.
Yes.
Because it would concern me that we're, you know, if you're taking this oath, you're, you're taking on an extra role and responsibility. So all of us are busy. We all have jobs, we own businesses, what have you.
Absolutely.
You're seeing to do this as an extra thing. And so I would just be concerned if we didn't have the required training needed. So as long as there's, I see that in here, but I, the way that the verbiage is, it sounds like that's still just encouraged as well. So thanks for clarifying.
Okay. Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Councilwoman Sturgeon, I agreed with you on the shall, because that really makes us council members that we do have to, we do have to take the training serious and make sure that we get them done at an appropriate time. But this has changed, but I also like the word shall.
I think with the original committee moving with the encouraged, with councilmember Amer being more comfortable with the encouraged, I think the encouraged win, if you will, between the two. Ultimately, again, this whole process is continuous improvement. So where we have things that are coming in new in one year, I think it's perfectly normal that we would go ahead and work to modify. An iterate is needed. So I think if we're good with this, again, we've got a long document and trying to stay mindful of councilmember Taylor, Clinton Taylor, who had asked that we not hash it out too painfully here. Sorry, I shouldn't put words in your mouth. Trying to keep it light. Okay. Back to other kind of key areas and sections, I will dive us right into what I'm going to refer to as the big heavy. So we did have a number of sections that did not have changes, and we did have, that's a smaller one, section 11. This was a big shift. So if you see all this red in the document, just a quick call out that the reason we had this change on 11 was, if you recall, oh gosh, maybe six to eight weeks ago, roughly, we had modified our code related to the handling of appeals within Auburn. And so appeals were something that we had received an update from legal to recommend striking that language, and as a result, that required updating this section within Rules and Procedures to reflect that this wasn't something that we were handling any longer. So if you have questions on why this came out, the folks who are most knowledgeable would be our legal department. But ultimately, that was reflected from ordinance number 6969 that we passed in 2025, I believe. So I'm seeing some nods, so I think I got that right. Okay, very good. Any questions on this one? Okay. Then the real big heavy that I was headed to when we took this little sidetrack here was actually to deputy mayor. So again, as I mentioned, thematically, this was one of the major areas where we had a lot of feedback, a lot of comments, a lot of concern and potential concern for how we are governing ourselves. And so ultimately, I'm just going to take us through this one maybe a little bit more slowly. But what we had heard throughout a lot of the feedback was a concern about having a deputy mayor with different kind of roles and responsibilities than other council peers, and how to be mindful of not creating a power structure that would disadvantage council members who are not deputy mayor. And so we worked to go through this and try and find kind of a nice hybrid approach that ultimately reinforces the power of council as a body that, at any point, both with the overall document as a whole, as well as individual sections within it, we can always off-cycle, you know, make motions that can either change this document and modify it that is available to us, or we can, Paul? What is, sorry, I'm low on blood sugar, blanking on. If we want to pause something and vote differently, so we can suspend our rules. We do have the ability always to suspend our rules. Sorry, took me a second. Sorry for not going to law school. So we can suspend the rules at any point on any of the things that we even have in this document. So again, ultimately, the power and the flexibility lies with all of us. So I say that as a note to bear in mind that as we go through this section, should we ever need to modify things, both annually, in the moment, or on the fly, we have the ability. But we still have to get majority votes to do so. So it's not just one person wants to do it differently, it's we still have to work as a collective to get it done. So what we see moving through this section is that we are able to do our selection and designation of one of us, council members, as deputy mayor for roughly a one-year time period, and that elections would be held no later than the last council meeting of the year. Now, any member of the state council who's served on council for at least one year by the commencement of the new term for deputy mayor and has attained their certificate of municipal leadership may be nominated for the position of deputy mayor by having that person's name put in nomination. So that is just a little bit of cleanup on what we had had last year. When we went through as committee, we found that the language was a little clunky. We spent a surprising amount of time, just on this point A, trying to get it framed out appropriately. In 2025, we had had back and forth on the question of whether or not to require the certificate of municipal leadership from AWC, and we did have quorum for that, I believe, now. We have more members of the body who have achieved that certificate, which is very good and exciting. So I don't know is that it is something that would be a hurdle. I think it is a good indicator that whoever's stepping into this role is committed to do the work, to be prepared for the role and the responsibilities of that role. Do we have any questions or concerns on 12 dot 1 or 12 dot 1A? Councilmember Tracy Kader.
Chair, the question I have is, in pre, and I believe last year's, we had a, we had language saying that there was no limit on reappointment. And I believe I suggested a one term per council to ensure fairness. Where does that sit within this section?
Sure. So let me pull up the notes I have here. So that was something that we had heard as a recommendation, both from yourself and councilmember Amer. And what we had discussed in committee, we tried to talk through use cases, right? So what are use cases or scenarios that could come up with both our existing body and future bodies that would play into that role? And so in the discussion, the committee was able to identify multiple scenarios where a council body might desire to have a long-running deputy mayor, and tenure limits could introduce other challenges. It was decided that there was not a need to introduce a cap because section 12 dot 1 dot H, which allows for elections to replace the deputy mayor with a majority vote. The role of deputy mayor is one that requires election by peers as the council body to act as the legislative head of the council, and there is no guarantee that all council members must or should fill that role during their term. So I think in the space of the question to introduce term limits, the concept and idea is to be able to collaborate, and if people are interested, serve in that position. And I think because we have the ability to introduce elections, you know, via motion with our rules as noted in section 12 dot 1 dot H, that gives us leeway to have flexibility if there needs to be a shift or a turnover. You might have somebody who's, has things happening in their life, or with their job, or in other situations where they might not be wanting to finish their full term. You might have other people or a council where, you know, with our body right now, very different than one I was in a few years ago, where previously more people were retired, and now with this cohort, more people are working day jobs, right? And so we don't know, and will not know, because we're not the voters, who's going to be stepping into these positions now or into the future. And so the idea of the tenure limit, I think, was something that could ultimately be a little too restrictive when we already have the power to change that individual today. And so if we seek to have replacements, it is still ultimately the council body that will have to decide to vote in that individual. And so our outcome was that we were not introducing that in this cycle, but we definitely discussed it, and we tried to talk through how things could happen and work. And councilmember Taylor, other Taylor, sorry, Clinton Taylor, and Cheryl, if you want to add any input to the conversation?
No. The only input I'll put is that was discussed for quite a long period of time, coming up with different scenarios. So it wasn't just passed over.
Okay. Councilmember Amer.
So I know request one year, I request two years because to encourage shared leadership. So it's good to have rotation. People know, like, this council serve, prevent long-term control of the position. So each one, they will serve the one or two during their term, allowed, align with fair governance practice. That's the reason for it. So when you have it, if council X will serve one year or two during their term, the other, they know they need to step up. That's how, there are some people, they will not speak. So it's allowed more share rather than we have one council. Because people, sometimes they make their decision in emotion, not in fact. That's the reason.
Yeah. I think ideally, if people are interested, and this is me speaking just as an individual, not as chair, is that, yeah, you have to indicate your interest, your desire, you know, what you feel like you're, you have to prepare you for that position and role. And then when we have the election, whenever we have the election, is to convince the other body member, pardon me, the other members of the body, that you're the right candidate. And so ultimately, it's something where, from a limits perspective, there was concern that that could be problematic if, in fact, we had a group of people where maybe only one or two people even wanted it. How would that work depending on the cycles and the different things? And so we thought that leaving it as is and recognizing that we have those powers today, we do, in fact, have the ability to change it out as often as we like. I've been through technically four different deputy mayors already, and likely another one before the end of the year. So it's, I don't think it's a given that anyone's necessarily going to stay. It just depends on how they're performing and what council decides to do. Councilmember Amer.
Either way, the council can suspend, even if you put it as a limit term, council can suspend the rules and vote for the same. It's go either way, there, yes or no. That's, would not make a difference.
Yeah.
If we put limit or not, council can suspend the rules. I see sometimes the issue, people get more emotion, they don't want to, if you have incompetent deputy mayor, "Oh, it's okay. We know the ending of the year will vote." So either way, it's not a big deal, but would be good to have it written, so to allow everybody to think and work hard.
Okay. I think right now, I'm hearing that we're okay leaving it as is and...
What, the whole section?
Uh, no. 12 dot 1 and 12 dot 1A.
We're good with that? Okay.
The next one, nomination for the position of deputy mayor shall be made by members of the council on the dates of the election for the deputy mayor position. The nomination, so this is just a shift. This wasn't a change in that, it was just we moved it down. Go ahead.
Why we remove the D?
Because it is a redundant statement with the fact that as a council body, we can change the deputy mayor as we like.
The deputy mayor is equal position, not suburb. So when you remove it, it's remove the meaning, like, it's peer, not higher. So the word still, should still be there.
It's redundant.
Wait, show me, show me where is the redundant. Where is, show me, show me where is the redundant? It's a specific, then you can refer to it to say point 12, point AD. So where are the redundant?
Uh, it's redundant with the fact that in the event that a council member selected as deputy mayor is unable to perform the duties of the position of deputy mayor or fails to act in accordance with the city council rules procedure, the council may by majority vote, remove the deputy mayor from this position. Uh, and so serving at the pleasure of council, this is the pleasure of council. If they're voting to get rid of you.
Something wrong, but okay.
What was that?
Nothing. I'm just saying that it should be specific line there. But it's again, it's not something I would die for, it's like.
Okay, uh, we removed it in an effort to, go ahead.
So I don't want you, so if you serve at our pleasure, and then somewhere else it says we can remove you, ain't that the same thing?
It's the same, but when you have it written clear there, you can specify.
That's pretty clear that you can remove someone. That's pretty clear.
You need to somehow add it here, the wording, so.
Okay, I, I can see your point, but it's pretty clear that it can be removed.
Yeah, I know, but it's good to reword it, add it, remove it.
Just add it. Uh, council member Amor, would you feel more comfortable if we undid the strikeout of the deputy mayor shall serve at the pleasure of the council? And maybe consolidated it with?
Consolidated.
Yeah. Consolidated it with the other.
To be clear.
Can I see general consensus? I'm seeing some nods. Uh, council member Lisa Sturgis, do you have any preference on that item?
I, I'm okay with that.
Okay, with consolidation?
Yep, consolidating it.
All right. Clerk, you got that? Beautiful, all right.
I'm sorry.
Really? All right, um, sorry, just making sure. So that is back in and moved. We've already reviewed the hereafter statement and acknowledged we're comfortable with that. I'm gonna bypass our references that we have agreed on. And then I is actually duplicative with the very first section. Uh, and so we just struck that because again, we've, it was redundant. It was already, uh, documented within the section. Uh, any questions on 12 dot 1 as a whole? Let's call. Okay. Uh, moving to 12 dot 2. Uh, so in this one, uh, again, with that theme of understanding that the deputy mayor is in fact head of the legislative branch, uh, there are certain duties that do need to be, uh, laid out, uh, for that individual or individuals as they go into that role in the future, uh, to know what they are responsible for. And so one of the things that we did clarify here, uh, bless you. Uh, a taste of it, uh, was the assistant new council member training. Uh, so previously, we had been a little bit more prescriptive, and so we pulled back from that, uh, to lean more into just being flexible with the fact that we just want to be consistent with our training section. So rather than try and reiterate all of the details of the training section here under our section on, on what the deputy mayor is supposed to do, help out as needed is the crux of this. Does anyone have questions on 12 dot 2, 3? Okay. The highlight was strictly to make sure that we were not getting confused on our, uh, references. So that we were double checking that when we reset our numbering, that we would, uh, get those updated. Um, number six, uh, 12 dot 2 dot 6. This one was important, we definitely heard feedback on this, was related to presiding over study sessions for councils. So, um, you know, we're all adults, and we have things that we care about and things that we're interested in. And we want to make sure that as we're here serving our community, that we can put our, uh, skills, interests, and talents to use. And so what we did here was we added, uh, the sentence to give some guidance. So the deputy mayor shall seek to solicit interest from council members and shall thereafter designate special focus area chairs and vice chairs, designate special focus area assignments, and work with the chairs of the special focus areas on portions of the study session over which the special focus area chairs preside in order to reinforce appropriate special focus area topics and to ensure that council members understand how to preside over their portion of the meeting. Um, so this item, sorry, I just said special focus area a lot there. Is, what we came to is that the committee saw a benefit in clarifying that the deputy mayor should solicit input from council members ahead of setting annual special focus area appointments. However, you know, the challenge is that the deputy mayor is elected to the helm, to helm the council and must make decisions, sometimes tough decisions, about who is to serve on which assignment. Considerations are made with respect to interest and experience, but it is not always possible to guarantee that everyone will be happy with their assignments. If council members seek to change their assignments, they should work with deputy mayor and SFA chairs to indicate preferences and discuss future appointment opportunities. So on this one, I think the challenge is that some of the special focus areas are, you know, maybe more exciting than others, may have more demand than others, but we still have to fill all of the chair and vice chair spots across the board. And so I think the goal is to make sure that while we do have one person giving the final decision, that we certainly do better about making sure that we engage to, to get people, uh, into that process. So, uh, is that a hand raised?
Yes.
Okay, council member Taylor?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I suggested clearer boundaries around this because some people are really more interested in some of the special focus areas than others and want to learn more, want to be able to serve that more. Uh, I'm glad that you possibly took that into consideration, and the wording there is good. I would hope that future deputy mayors really take that into consideration because it doesn't matter, it's glamorous to some, you know, some departments are more glamorous than others, but some of us actually really, really, really are very passionate about that work. And I would hope in the future that people really take that into consideration when you're selecting a chair and a co-chair. Thank you.
Makes sense. Clerk? Oh, uh, council member Sturgis.
I have a question on, have we looked at in the past a, uh, rotation? If we're elected to a four-year term, um, I, I totally agree with both views or with the view also that I know that we're super passionate about key areas. But would there be benefit to, even if we're not passionate about it, having to serve on it for a year? So that we get a full, throughout our four-year term, we have an opportunity to really learn all four of the key special focus areas? Or would that cause, you know, too much, um, I guess, lack of continuity in leadership or what have you for, for the, the actual focus area? So I'm just not sure if, if that's been discussed prior as an option, or if we've looked at that.
Uh, that's a great question. Um, I'm gonna hold off on answering because I do see a hand in the room. Uh, deputy mayor Rix.
Councilman, uh, council member Sturgis, I agree with you. Um, and I know, um, I think it's always important to, if you're representing the city, to represent each, uh, part of the city. And it gives you more knowledge, and it gives you, um, more things to learn by rotating.
Okay. Uh, who was first? Council member Tracy Taylor?
Uh, I'm gonna re, push back on that deputy mayor just because, well, yes, it's great to have a good, a clear scope of all departments. I think having council members be, um, what is the word I'm looking for? Um, uh, I just lost it. Um, it's a long day. Um, subject matter experts, hello. Um, on that specific department, if they're passionate about, great. But also, study sessions are for that reason and that reason only, I mean, alone, is to bring forward your chair, your co-chair, to come in and educate along with the department heads about those, um, different departments. But it's always nice to have one specific council member that has that knowledge of that special focus area. So if there is a question that arises, not only can you go to your peer and talk to them, but you can also have those meetings with your peers and department directors as well. So I will push back on that.
Okay. Uh, council member Trout Manuel?
Um, I have to agree with that because, again, I hate to say that I've been here so long, and I'm still on the same committees that I had when I first started in 2014. It's not that I didn't want to be in the other committees, but I was never, I'm asked to serve on those other. And I would have loved to have served on some of the other committees to learn instead of just hearing it when the directors come and share. It, it, it serves, I think it serves the need for each one of us to at least have a, a chance to get into another committee. As our, our other council member has mentioned, that it would be nice every two years to allow somebody. Uh, you know, you're here four years, and then if you run again, you're here another four more years. So if you're still in the same committee, you know.
Council member, uh, Rix, do you have anything you wanted to add in your earlier statement?
No, I, no, except for, um, I will say, and I'm trying to figure out how to say this. So council member Tracy Taylor, but you're taking away from opportunities too from other people learning by doing, by keeping one person in that committee. So we didn't get elected to serve just part of the city. We got elected to serve all of the city. So I think it's important to learn all aspects of the city.
Okay. Council member Sturgis, did you have anything you wanted to add into the kind of open dialogue around, uh, special focus assignments?
I can see pros and cons for both. I, um, I, I see huge value in having a subject matter expert, um, and having someone really passionate about the topic because they're gonna be able to drive advocacy in a better way than someone who is just there exploratorily, you know? Not saying that we wouldn't be caring or, or be actively involved. Um, but I'm just, I'm trying to stay with the, the spirit of fairness of just how we talked about with the deputy mayor having, you know, one term so that it could offer leadership to other opportunities. So I think that's where my brain was, is just, um, if, like with, with council member Trout Manuel being on, um, you know, the same committee for 10 years, what if there's someone else who's super passionate about that area and they're never gonna get a chance to, to be on that committee? Um, so I'm just, I, I'm not married to either, uh, to, to an opinion at this point, um, just because I'm still learning and just got a new special focus area, which I happen to be super passionate about. But I am curious just on, um, how to, how to, uh, ensure that folks have a, a chance to, um, expand their leadership.
Okay. Um, a possibility that I'll throw out there, thinking of ways to potentially solution for this. I think, uh, the language here in this item is, I think if we can feel good about this, we will also be talking about council retreats. And I think that maybe this would be a great thing to include within that section because that's, you know, a couple days every year where as a body, we can come together and have the conversations about how do we want to, to, you know, put ourselves forward for the roles, maybe have more chance to discuss with each other, uh, in a more informal setting. And that might be a good vehicle for us to find a way to, to, to handle those appointments. Uh, council member Amor?
Okay, I have comment. My heart either way, but usually my brain, I think usually it's good to have someone who's expert, get someone mentor, then change. Either way, deputy mayor need to seek interest from people. And if, if would be me, I see somebody has passion for something, yeah, then I put someone else with them. As long as not remove the people from their special focus area without ask them. That's the main things. Then everything can be done by talking.
Okay. So I'm hearing we feel good about this. And I'm gonna make just a side note, uh, around SFA appointments that maybe we can keep an eye out for ways that we could introduce some mechanics there in other parts of the document. Do we feel good with that generally? Yes? It's a hard one because I, again, I'm, I can see both. Go ahead.
So at the end of the day, the deputy mayor has to make some decisions. And when the deputy mayor, the line was added there would seek interest, which, um, I think previous, I don't know, I know when I was new, that was done. It just wasn't in writing and added. So now it's been, it's been added in the language. And at some point, the deputy mayor has to make some decisions. And once they or he or she has gotten input from folks what their interests are, you may have some new person that comes on, uh, that may have the same interest, that might want to be in that. So I think the bottom line here with this particular point is that the deputy mayor will ask for your feedback. Hey, I like this, what's your backup? Okay, great. And then the deputy mayor needs to have the, the, the ability to just make that decision. And if a person's like, you know, you know, well, I've been on that committee for a year and I wanted to be back on it. Well, you know, I had to make a decision, and I put this person on there. We just gotta move with that. And it's not, and I get what the point was earlier when we were reading the comments about sometimes, you know, the deputy mayor may be putting the same person on there because of whatever the thoughts were behind that. But I think at the end of the day, um, you know, at some point, a decision has to be made. And so I think it's appropriate for the deputy mayor to seek input and feedback and ask folks, hey, here's, you know, what's coming up and, you know? And once that happens, the deputy mayor then just needs to make a decision. And we just need to move on.
Uh, mayor back this?
Thank you. Two things. First, I think that first sentence in number six is duplicative of number one.
Okay.
But also, there are two people in each special focus area. There could be a SME, if you will, someone that has a preference to remain on a committee. And the other person could be rotated out so that there is learning opportunity for every one of the council members on those committees. So I think there is room for that opportunity for both to have a SME, someone who is really passionate about the area, and then be able to rotate another council member on an annual or every other year basis.
Okay. All right, uh, and...
Just one more real quick thing. Thank you for saying that, Mayor. And I wasn't saying that people shouldn't be allowed to stay on it. I'm saying to this point here is when the, when the, the, uh, feedback has been solicited, then the deputy mayor needs to move forward and make a decision. That's what I was saying. So.
All right, I think we're good with the line. Um, and then we do have some other areas where it may crop up again. So we'll just keep an eye out for that as an area of interest. And then I do believe the mayor is correct that the preside over the study sessions of the city council does in fact duplicate 12 dot 2 dot A dot 1. Unless there's something distinguishing it differently. Okay. So then we can keep 12 dot 2 dot A dot 6, which is strike the first line. Very good. All right. Uh, thank Mayor for that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good I. And then, uh, this chunk, uh, was shifted into, I believe it was already covered in other areas. Uh, and so we saw that being removed. Because ultimately, it is the city attorney and clerk, um, handle trainings. And I don't know that that belongs in the deputy mayor section anyways. Um, for the mayor council relations. So we did work to take some of the feedback. I think we wordsmithed from some of your language, actually, uh, council member Tracy Taylor, uh, for one, which is to help maintain a positive and cooperative relationship between the mayor and the city council and facilitate communication between the mayor and the council to promote transparency, collaboration, and effective governance. And so we felt that that update, uh, really, you know, took care of what might have been in line two. So we did go ahead and strike two. Um, do we have any questions on that modification? Very good? Not, same on?
I, I have a question, I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
Deputy clerk. Um, so I have a, I guess, maybe explain the word facilitate, but just as a new city council member, it's been really confusing trying to figure out. I don't want to ever, you know, usurp authority or not follow the chain of command. And so having to go ask deputy mayor if I can go talk to mayor seems like that's just not, um, I, I don't like it. It is, so I'm just concerned because it seems like we're duplicating conversations. We're having to, you know, have a conversation, um, with deputy mayor first to then have the same conversation with mayor. Or fear of, you know, if I accidentally in passing have a conversation because I see the mayor. Or fear of, you know, if I accidentally in passing have a conversation because I see the mayor and then didn't bring the deputy mayor into it. It just feels that I can understand the leadership role and the spirit of the leadership role of the deputy mayor, and I, I think that's great. But I, I'm not comfortable with the facilitate communication between because it's just adding a layer there that doesn't seem necessary to me based on how I've observed, you know, the normal course of business is happening.
I'll chime in on that, which is facilitate communication is by no way, shape, or form a roadblock or a bottleneck to prohibit you from having conversations directly with the mayor. Now, what that is responding to and intended to do is that the deputy mayor is head of legislative body, already works with the mayor as far as things for setting agendas, working to figure out timing for different events and things that council may be invited to or participating in, and working to help, the deputy mayor works to distribute information that the mayor want to share out to council. And so it's not a limiter to, there's nothing in that statement that blocks you from having your own independent communications. It's simply to say that, again, within this section of deputy mayor's responsibilities towards supporting healthy relationship between mayor and council is to make sure that if there's something that you should be having a conversation with the mayor on, to, you know, let you know as well. Because it may be that the deputy mayor has heard about something in the pipeline or, you know, coming up on future agendas that may be relevant to something that you've brought to a one-on-one or a two-on-one with the deputy mayor that could be of interest for you from a issue standpoint or a, um, things that you want to pursue. And so, yeah, that, there's nothing in that language that blocks you in current state or within what's being proposed. And it's strictly to make sure that the deputy mayor knows that their main objective is to support that healthy relationship. Does that help clarify?
It does, but I guess I would be more comfortable with the word support versus facilitate because in my world, facilitate means, you know, facilitate. So, um-
Oh, you're thinking of it from like a mediation standpoint?
Yeah.
Ah, okay. I think-
I'm a very spirit of the law type of person, but I'm learning very quickly that the letter of the law matters. And so for me coming in, if I'm a very literal person, the facilitate communication, it puts an unintended barrier there then. So I, I would feel more comfortable with the word support.
All right. I'm getting a nod from Councilmember Tracy Taylor that she's comfortable with the change to support. I'm good with it. I'm looking for faces in the room. Seeing some positive indicators. Okay. I think we can swap that out. And I've got a nod from the clerk that, that we've got that captured. Okay. Look at us. All right. Sorry, this is probably slower than you want, Clinton, but I'm very excited by the progress we're making. We've got some cleanup of the interim reference. And then in, where are we here? Still under mayor council relations. In the performance of duties of the mayor in a temporary capacity not defined as prolonged absence, the deputy mayor shall not have authority to appoint, remove, replace, discipline, or take other similar action on any department director or employee of the city. Now, this statement is meant to indicate that if the mayor goes on vacation or is at a conference or is doing something that is inherently kind of a short duration situation, if the deputy mayor is filling in, they will not have the ability to do anything that would still fall into an administrative capacity. Those things can hold until the mayor's back. And so I believe this was added, I can't remember who brought it up. I believe that came from the committee conversation. So it might have been, um, honestly, I can't remember. But that was what's intended with this addition is to speak to that situation. Do we have any questions or concerns on that clarification? Mayor?
Yeah, can we go to where the prolonged absence is defined? Because prolonged absence, I believe, is more than two weeks.
Yeah.
I don't think the deputy mayor should have the authority at two weeks plus a day to appoint, remove, replace, or discipline.
So in the event of a prolonged absence or incapacitation that exceeds two weeks, a state of disability that prohibits the functions of the duties of the mayor, then the deputy mayor should perform the duties. So if we have a future mayor that is over two weeks of prolonged absence and incapacitation, how would you anticipate that we would pay our bills? Or do whatever functions that would be within that section?
No, I'm just talking about the, have the authority to appoint, remove, replace, or discipline department director or employee of the city. Because let's say a mayor at some point is lucky enough to be able to take three weeks of vacation. That doesn't mean on the third week that the deputy mayor who's filling in should have the ability to do those functions.
Okay. As it stands, it is correct, prolonged absence definition would say that vacation up to two weeks, things after that point. Are you recommending a change to a different timeframe?
I'm just recommending that the way it is written in 12 point 12B5.
That one's saying, and if they're in the temporary capacity, if you're within that two week or-
I, I realize that, but that's why I'm saying not defined as a prolonged absence. So if there is a mayor who takes a vacation for three weeks, that still should not allow for the deputy mayor to be able to appoint, remove, replace, or discipline.
So with this statement here, this is saying if, specific to five, if we're in a temporary capacity, not a prolonged absence, they can't do those things. If we need to clarify what constitutes prolonged absence, then we need to go up to section three and re-clarify what constitutes prolonged absence. But I think with the temporary capacity, if we're in that temporary zone, no, we're not allowing the deputy mayor to do those things. I would agree with you. So do you see a scenario where, do we understand what the impacts to city operations would be for a prolonged absence over the two-week threshold? So what things start to happen?
I understand there are things that start to happen. I just, I'm not sure. Well, I know I don't agree with the addition of the language in 12B5.
Where is the definition of the prolonged absence?
The definition of the prolonged absence is established in, uh, yeah, 12 dot 2 dot B-
Right there.
Three, this section here.
Can you have?
Yes, Councilmember Amer.
I, I request to add comment C. If the mayor absent extend beyond, beyond for four weeks, the deputy mayor shall call special meeting of the city council. At the meeting, the council shall vote appoint an acting mayor from, to serve until the mayor return. Any council member may nominate themselves or another council member for consideration. I have this, like, in case, let's say, mayor, we had disaster sadly. In 10 years, the mayor, something happened to it. It doesn't mean the deputy mayor will jump in. It's need to bring back to the council to vote who want, they want to be acting as a deputy mayor. That will allow an absent, nothing will be happening. I submitted one of my comment.
Right.
I ask for C.
So we'll come to C in a second. So if you can hold on that thought. Did you have a question, Councilmember Trout Manuel? Sorry, I thought I saw your hand. Okay. So the question that I think would need to be answered is, should the mayor, current or future, need to be absent for more than two weeks with, say, a planned vacation or something known that can be accommodated for? What functions are at risk within the city with regard to the ability to appoint, remove, replace, discipline, or take similar action? So if we have a number of open positions that need to be filled and hired, if we have checks that need to be paid, vendors that need to be paid, contracts-
Those things aren't listed in there. It's only the appointment, removal, replacement, or discipline of a department director or employee. Has nothing to do with paying bills.
Okay. So in this scenario, and for the deputy mayor, if it's a temporary capacity, they can't do those things. So is it just this second piece then?
It's the, in the performance of the duties of the mayor, the deputy mayor shall not have authority because it's, should only be if the mayor is incapacitated for a longer period of time.
Right. This is why any temporary capacity-
Not because of, not because of two weeks of vacation.
In two weeks of vacation, the deputy mayor would not be doing any of these things.
No, but two weeks and one day in this definition would allow the deputy mayor to do those things, and I don't think that's appropriate.
Uh, Councilmember Taylor?
Right. So we missed that. And this was language that was already in there. So it looks like that that may be something that would, you know, need to be cleaned up. Because again, this was already a document. So the only thing that's in there and it blew is what we wrote or took out. So it's been in there for a long time, and so we missed it. And so I would suggest that, because right now, my understanding, and thank you for catching that, Mayor, is that there's this, I don't know what they were thinking when they wrote that to begin with anyway, but this, there's, if the mayor is out for two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, had surgery, or God forbid, something were to happen, right? There, we need to clean that up in terms of what does he mean by prolonged absence? And I think that'll clean all that up.
Because you could be on vacation and still have the ability to make decisions.
No, I understand that.
It's only in the case of disability or incapacitation that the deputy mayor should be able to have those functions.
I get it, but they, and I hear what you're saying. They just define a prolonged absence as two weeks.
Right. I know, and that's what I'm saying is, I disagree with the, well, it's, it's only, prohibits the performance of the duties of office. And then the vacation leave for periods up to two weeks doesn't mean that the mayor can't do their, their role. I can assure you that anytime I've been on vacation, I have still been doing my job.
I see what you're saying. Okay. I, I see what you're saying. Okay.
This need to go, yeah, this needs to go.
Yeah, because she could be out and had surgery and be out for, you know, two months and still be at home working. That would be, that would be a prolonged absence, but she's still able to do, or they are still able to do the work, so.
Can I interject? So in this scenario, going by the header, in the event of a prolonged absence or incapacitation that exceeds two weeks, indicating a state of disability that prohibits function of duties. If the mayor is able to perform actions remotely, then they're functioning within duties. So I don't think that this would even be applicable in the first place. And so if we want to modify, uh, what's considered or what shall not be considered prolonged absence, we can do so. But I think I would have concerns about having, you know, a four-week departure without being able to appoint someone to a commission or to a board. Or, you know, if we want to revisit this, shall not have the authority to appoint, remove, replace, discipline, or take other similar action on any department director or employee of the city. So I think we should maybe table this, rework it, and come back for clarity? If council's comfortable with that? Uh, Councilmember Sturgis, did you have comment?
Yeah, I just think that, because I agree with the mayor. And I, I think it's just a, a small wording change just to allow the, the flexibility there that it, and to be more specific in stating that prolonged absence is when there's an incapacitation or disability. And so it, the first, you know, paragraph 4.3 makes sense. But then, uh, in the prolonged absence that exceeds two weeks is defined as requiring a leave of absence. So it would require a leave of absence, um, to trigger that. And then, um, but vacation leave for periods up to two weeks, can we just take out for periods up to two weeks and just put vacation leave, comma, illnesses requiring an absence, um, less than two weeks out of state shall not be considered prolonged?
It already does say that vacation leaves for periods of up to two weeks, et cetera.
Take out for periods of up to two weeks. Because if the mayor wants to take three weeks vacation, I'm pretty sure that the mayor would then, you know, the mayor role is responsible for ensuring that the directors are able to perform their jobs and have a, you know, plan while they're out of office. And then if there was something urgent that came up, they would be able to be contacted and are capable of, of performing the duty.
Uh, Councilmember Taylor?
Let's be honest here, when does mayors take vacation? They don't. They don't. They're constantly working. They don't take vacation. They don't, they're not separated from their job. So I, I struggle with that whole piece.
Yeah. I think we need clarity that there is, it's incapacitation or disability, and that they cannot perform the functions.
Right. So, uh, Councilmember Trout, Taylor?
Why don't we table it? Bring it back?
We can't do motions in study session. But what I can do is put it in the parking lot for topics. We can vet with city attorney to make sure that there's nothing driving this coming from any type of code anywhere. Because I do think it seems a little irregular, that it seems purely specific, and I just want due diligence.
Yeah, I'm reading that a little bit more. I'm starting it. Okay.
Because it could be stemming from something related to succession planning that we need to have.
I can give you the history. That's not it.
We're almost at time for the night. So I think it actually makes sense to parking lot it. We can go rework it. And then we can, uh, include you in that reworked mayor so we can get that input. And then, uh, Councilmember Amer, I think you had your hand up.
Oh, I have comment. That's okay. I'll table it because I want to add C. And besides rework it, my understanding when ad hoc come to the floor, there'll be no ad hoc, their job ending. So will be the rework here. Is that correct statement?
See, again, I'm so sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, the chair said we will go back, rework, and bring it. My understanding that after they brought it to the floor, there'll be no ad hoc. So they're not going back to meet with the attorney. Is that correct? That's what happened last year. After we brought it to the floor, it became to the floor. It will be working here.
I believe that needs to necessarily change the function of the committee. The committee is able to take guidance from the full body.
That's why I asked, that's what happened last year. When we brought it to the floor, they said it's done, like, the ad hoc job, it's ending, and will be in the floor. That mean we would discuss at next meeting or next opportunity with the attorney here. That's what happened last year. So I'm asking for clarification.
My understanding last year was that there was consensus of council just to keep it in the floor because there was so much challenge. But, uh-
Looking at segment 16. I'm looking at 16.2. I don't know that answer off the top of my head. If I could have just a moment.
Yeah. The goal would be to get an updated version that we can continue to progress on when we get back on the agenda for the next session. So.
To bring it to the floor, we will work it together. Because we did not make any consensus last time. That's how it done. So I'm asking one different, just for clarification.
Pardon?
I said he's finding out.
Yeah, it's okay. It's okay.
So I don't see anything in 16.2 that indicates that once the ad hoc committee brings the matter to council, that the ad hoc committee is thereby dissolved. And I don't have a specific recollection of what happened last year, Council Amer. I apologize.
I will, one second. I will note that when I have served on ad hoc committees in the past, that we have taken feedback from council, iterated through whatever the topic was, and then brought back those updates for additional consideration. So in this scenario, the goal would be to help facilitate best use of this meeting time, both from a staff perspective and ours. And if we need to tweak it in that session, we'll, we have that- And if we need to tweak it in that session, we'll, we have that available to us. Council member Trump Manu?
Could I just have a, uh, a clarification on sidebar talking? When we're deciding on what we're talking on there, and we have some sidebar talking, is that allowed with council?
Are you referring to something within this active meeting?
With this, with this going on right here, there's some sidebar talking over here. And I just want to clear, is that allowed as a council while we are discussing some things?
I think under section six or seven for courtesy, it would probably not be recommended to have crosstalk while we're in session. However, uh, at the beginning of the session, I did indicate that I was looking for engagement and to take a slightly more informal approach, so folks could contribute and chime in. So I think it's something to be mindful of. Uh, but for the time being, uh, I think we're about wrapped up.
Is that with us talking with you when we are making some decisions and recommendation instead of having sidebar talking? So is it, you're allowing us to, to talk and share and, and direct the recommendations to you? Do we allow the sidebar talking and making some, you know, decisions at that? That's, that's all I'm asking.
Okay. Uh, for guiding and sharing this session as chair of the committee, I would request that if people have feedback or comments, that they would direct them to the chair. And I will work to coordinate all of the input that we receive. Uh, council member Taylor?
I was just gonna say, what does the rules and procedure say? Just go by that. That way you know.
7.3.
7.3, there it is.
It's just a little distracting. I'm sorry. Okay.
And 4.5.
Okay. Uh, so per section seven debates, uh, 7.3 courtesy, members of the council and the presiding officer in the discussion, comments or debate of any matter or issue shall address the remarks to the presiding officer, be courteous in their language and deportment, and shall not engage in or discuss or comment on personalities or make derogatory remarks or insinuations with respect to any other members of the council or any member of the staff or the public, and shall at all times confine their remarks to those facts which are germane and relevant to the question or matter under discussion. And then what was the other?
4.5.
4.5. So with combination of that and our overarching deportment that will utilize language appropriate to the seriousness of the matters at hand, addressing remarks to the presiding officer, and do our best to recognize folks by title. Yes, council members shall refrain from side conversations with other individual council members. And council members shall also refrain from inappropriate or derogatory body language, comments, or any other actions that detract from the department of council.
Just for clarification and for the record, there were no side conversation. When I ask you question about, uh, the ad hoc, I looked to our clerk and the council member Tracy Taylor nodded her head. It's so, it's late, but.
It is late.
Give the chair back or the deputy mayor in the meeting. Because we're so adult, I don't want to be here using my point of order. So let's keep going.
Uh, council member Amer, thank you for your last input. Uh, I'll wrap up our progress today, uh, saying thank you to everyone for taking the time to join us on this journey, for providing good input, for working to collaborate and accept things if they weren't necessarily exactly as you asked for, but being willing to, uh, work with adjustments on language and topics and content. And, and I think we actually did really well tonight. So I thank you for that. You're proud of us. And we will, uh, continue this work in another study session.
Question?
Oh.
Would we have an?
Council member Sturgis?
Is there an opportunity to, uh, do the revisions that we have agreed on thus far and then get a, a updated version to review prior to the next time we come together to continue the discussion?
I'm looking at the clerk comment.
So to restate your question, you're asking if the items that you guys have already agreed upon to accept those track changes and put a new item back in the packet?
Just so that we could see a cleaner version with the remaining changes we need to discuss?
Sure.
If it's not, if it's too much work or it doesn't, it's not urgent or super important, but I was just curious if, so we could see the ones we've already completed as cleaned up.
Some of the areas weren't completely clear on. The changes have been accepted by the full body. But if, once it happened, I'm happy to accept those changes in a draft form.
Thank you.
Can we have a different color? Red or something that accept change? So to be able to see, like, like last year when we accept, have it in different colors.
So your question, council member Amer, is to have the proposed changes that have been accepted by this body drafted in a different color, like in purple?
Yes.
And then everything that is old be black as normal? And then proposed changes that might strike through? That's your, that's your request?
Yes, please. Thank you.
It sounds like the clerk is able to accommodate the updates, uh, in a way that will hopefully make sense as we review. With that, I think we've wrapped up this part of the agenda. Back to you, deputy mayor.
Study session adjourned.